...into order. Supervisor Curro, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to do a roll call for us, please?
Supervisor Setello?
Present.
Supervisor Curro?
Here.
Supervisor Zenger?
Here.
Supervisor Kosmiki?
Here.
And Supervisor Gonzalez is absent since she's not feeling well.
Thank you. Can we get a motion to acknowledge a certificate of posting, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, four zero. Okay, presentations and recognitions this morning. We have a proclamation declaring the week of August 6th through 12th as National Health Center Week in San Benito County being presented to the San Benito Health Foundation. Can I get a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. At this time, can I have Ken Williams and Vicky Montoya come up to the podium, please? Four zero. At this time, can I have Ken Williams and Vicky Montoya come up to the podium, please?
Good morning. Thank you both for being here. I've had the privilege of working with the San Benito Health Foundation for many years, and I appreciate all of the work that you all do. It's amazing, and you truly go above and beyond. I know where there's a need in the community, if it means working after hours, your staff will step up and work after hours if it's coming in on a Saturday. And so I just really appreciate everything that you all do for our community. So, over fifty years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventative healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. Community self-help centers are governed by patient majority boards, ensuring that patients are engaged in their own healthcare decisions. There are locally owned and operated small businesses that serve as critical economic engines, helping to power local economies by generating eighty-five billion in economic activity and more than thirty-seven billion in labor income in some of the country's most economically distressed communities. Community health centers nationally support more than five hundred thousand direct and indirect jobs, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician's assistants, licensed family therapists, and certified nurse midwives who work as part of a multidisciplinary clinical teams designed to treat the whole patient. Community health center models continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance status, improving health outcomes, and reducing healthcare system costs. Community health centers are on the front lines of emerging healthcare crises, providing access to care for our nation's veterans, addressing the opioid epidemic, and responding to public health threats in the wake of natural disasters. Community health centers operate close to a thousand mobile units, providing accessible health services in hundreds of rural and urban communities. National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to celebrate America's more than fourteen hundred community health center organizations with over fourteen thousand service delivery sites, including over three thousand schools. We honor their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health center opened their doors more than fifty years ago. Be it proclaimed that the San Benito County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the week of August 6th through 12th as National Health Center Week. We encourage all Americans to take part in this week by visiting their local health center and celebrating the important partnership between America's community health centers and the communities they serve. So, a witness of the approval of this proclamation by the Board of Supervisors on San Benito County's eighth day of August 2023. And I look forward to being out there on Wednesday with your event feeding the front line. So thank you again for all that you do. Would you, either of you like to say anything?
Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Vicky, and I'm here on behalf of the San Benito Health Foundation to thank you for the proclamation. And it's great to tell you that tomorrow from three to six, we will be giving out food to the people that will come in, and we invite anyone to come and just pass by and say, hey, good job. So, anyway, I want to thank all of you and the community for supporting the Healthcare Week. Because it's important. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any department head announcements?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors. I'd like to invite up Chris Mangano, one of our OES department.
Good morning, Board. I am here representing EMS this morning to introduce a program that was required through the EMS 911 contract with AMR. It's taken quite a bit of work to come up with it, but it is a membership for air and ground ambulance transport. It was just launched last week. I have the brochures available today. You must be a resident of San Benito County to purchase the membership. It is unlike the existing CalStar membership because this includes two ground ambulance transports. Membership fees cover not just yourself, but anyone who resides within your household. And the, it's less than thirteen dollars per month, per household. There is no out-of-pocket expenses on emergent ground or air provided under the AMR umbrella, which includes AMR, Royal Metro, CalStar Reach. So if you happen to need an ambulance and you are in Santa Clara County, you are covered by your San Benito County membership. Same with air ambulance anywhere that umbrella of AMR is covered. So we will start advertising this. They have a rep that will be pushing it heavily. They will be at the preparedness fair that we're hosting in September, and I have the information here if anyone is interested.
Chris, real quick question, because I am a member of the air membership. If we're that, do we cancel that and then become part of this, or how does that work?
I'm not exactly sure how they'll do that, because that, I don't know if you have the Find Me Home program, so there's some other things that come with that.
Okay.
But we will work that out.
Okay, sounds great. And so do they, who do they contact?
It's through AMR directly.
Through AMR, okay, great.
So all the contact information's on the brochure. I will leave some back here, and then I have many.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's a great program. I really support it.
Very excited to do this.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to add, this is, I just think this is a big accomplishment for you, Chris, and for your department, and for the county as a whole, and it's something that we've talked about in the past, and I'm just really proud of you and the county for taking this step. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted, if I may, Madam Chair, I want to add the same thing. This is something that the board directed us to look at when we brought the AMR contract to your board, looking at the engine it, folks within our community to reduce the cost. And so this is a great product, and I know there's been a lot of work over the last year, year and a half on this, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We also have another announcement out of our Public Works side. We have Steve Loop going to provide an update on a few things.
All right, good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. Chris also wanted me to mention that the county has received several hundred National Weather Service Extreme Alert radios, and they are programmed to alert the holder of the radio if there's flood, earthquake, hurricanes, fires, those type of things. And so you can reach out to Chris at OES, and those are free to the county, any resident that would like one of those. And so she just wanted me to mention that as well. Regarding Public Works, project updates for everybody. So the Union Road Bridge Replacement Project is beginning this week. We got through some environmental hurdles, and now we're starting construction. And that project is located at the intersection of San Benito Street and Union Road. It includes a brand-new bridge that will be built about two hundred feet south of the intersection, and it also includes a signal there, as well as a signal at Sienega and Union, because we're starting to have some backups there with residents. And we're excited that project's beginning. It's a forty million dollar project. The federal government's paying for eighty-eight percent of that, which is wonderful. And the project should last about two, two and a half years. So a couple summers from now, towards the fall of 2025, that project should be complete. The construction management team that's on board with this, they'll be creating a webpage to be put on our website to update the residents. We won't have any detours and permanent lane closures for at least a year or so. So that's off into the future. There will be PG&E and AT&amp;T doing some utility relocations, but the lanes out there will be remaining open. But nevertheless, we're going to get a webpage devoted to this project. It's a pretty large project, so that's upcoming. Another project that should start next month or so is down in South County. We're going to start grinding and compacting New Idria Road and then rebuilding New Idria and Pinot Road soon after that. And as soon as we finish the Pinot Road, that New Idria-Pinot Road project, we'll be jumping over to Shore Road, and we're going to be rebuilding Shore Road. It'll be in two stages. So that'll probably start in a few months, three or four months, once we finish the South County project. And we'll start shore. The first phase will be from Fraser Lake to Perry Court, and then we'll go from Perry Court to San Felipe. So the Shore Road reconstruction will be a welcome sight to our road crews, who spend a lot of times and effort potholing that area. Right around that same time, probably before that, actually, maybe the next month or so, hopefully sooner, we actually have a striping improvement project to stripe a half a dozen roads around the county, including San Juan Highway near Anzar High School. So we have a contractor on board. We're just trying to get them started on that striping project for stripes. It kind of vanished over the years, unfortunately. Regarding safety projects, we're also looking at installing speed bumps at a lot of locations around the county. And I just want to give a little bit of a heads up to folks that might be listening in. And so, for example, in my neighborhood, I live in kind of a standard neighborhood. If I drive over thirty miles an hour, my wife starts to scold me. And I deserve it, because you should not be driving over thirty in a neighborhood. Well, we just finished paving a project in Aromas on a few streets, and one of those streets is essentially a neighborhood. It doesn't look like a neighborhood, but there's multiple, multiple houses on this street. And when we did the pre-construction walk, one of the residents came up to our team and said, "We don't want you to construct this project, because when you construct this project, people will start driving very fast on this roadway." And that person, unfortunately, was correct. So it was an old road. It was a narrow road. It was falling apart, so we needed to repave it, and luckily we had the money to do that. But now, on that neighborhood street, and it's a rural street, but it's a neighborhood street, we have people driving forty-five to fifty-five miles an hour occasionally on that street, and that's not good. So I just want to encourage people to think of some of these roads. They might look rural, but there's a lot of houses and homes and pets and small people on this road. Just please think about driving a little bit slower. So that's the update from Public Works. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Hey, Steve. What's the status of New Idria Road right now? Can you get through it with a vehicle, a normal vehicle?
You cannot get through it on a normal vehicle. You can get through it on a four-wheel drive vehicle. So the first part of the New Idria, when we grind it, we're working with a property owner near the big washout, which is, I guess what you're referring to, the large washout? Yeah. We're going to create essentially like a reverse curve to go on to this rancher's property with his permission. We've started conversations with him, and it'll be a gradual gravel road, cross the creek, Los Pinos Creek, and then back up. And so that'll be kind of the first things we're working with, with Granite Rock, the contractor, to get that installed. FEMA is also theoretically giving us, giving the county four hundred thousand dollars to do those improvements, but we have to go through some CEQA and some environmental processes, which is going to take a little bit of a while to actually put some new pipes and rebuild the road temporarily. So that'll take a little while to get through CEQA, and then ultimately, the state has given us two million dollars, a little bit more than that, to put a permanent bridge structure there. That won't start until spring 2025, because we're also going through the hydraulics and the CEQA analysis for that project. So that's kind of the status of that.
I'm going to say thank you for asking that, because that was one of my questions. My other question is about Sienega and going up and over, connecting the two areas that have been redone. Is that in the near future, or is that far out?
So are you talking about the gap from Mudstone to Bird Creek that hasn't been done? Is that the question?
The one that goes over the hill where the slide was during the flood, and you were repairing, I saw them out there repairing the, and re-stabilizing the hillside.
Yeah, so we're almost finished with the restabilization. We're going to put a couple guardrails where those embankments failed. And then the larger gap that's still not reconstructed from Mudstone to Bird Creek, we're in the final design phase. There was a larger slip-out during the recent storms that we're trying to, probably going to have to do something similar to what we just did at the location you're talking about. So that project, if it gets completed, it's almost complete, the design, so hopefully we can bid it out in the fall and start it in the spring, if that's the other piece you're referring to.
Basically, how long before they can actually ride over that in a car that isn't a four-wheel drive in some respects? It's just cars bottom out in certain areas of Sienega.
Of Sienega, well. So the construction duration for that last piece, probably six to eight months, so probably by next fall, it'll be completed.
Okay, I will give updates. Thank you.
Sounds good. Anybody else?
Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. Just to clarify, on the Union Road Bridge part, so no delays for a year, but then after that, I mean, it's down the road, but we can expect some sort of, is it going to be significant? I'm just sort of thinking ahead here.
No, so the way, it won't be significant. So we're going to build a new bridge. We're going to get as close to the conformes as we can, the approaches. And I have to look at the schedule again. It'll be, it will be a few months. We're going to have to route folks around so they won't be able to make a direct connection. That includes when we rebuild the Sienega intersection and put a signal there. So we'll try to make it as painless as possible, and I'll, we're actually just had a meeting this morning to start talking about that look-ahead schedule for next year. But I think on and off, there will be, you know, a month here and a month there of rerouting folks in that area.
Okay, and I think it goes without saying, we want to ease, as much ease as possible on the drivers. I just think of, you know, I know it's an exaggerated example, but the 156 project, we were told before this expansion that it was going to be, quote, slight delays, and it's a nightmare there now. And I know that's an issue that we need to work with COG and the state to address. But, so I just want to be realistic with residents, but also make it a priority that we do our best to do whatever we can to lessen the inconvenience, because it's such a highly traveled area, obviously. And then the Carr Avenue, appreciate all the work done. It's another example, we can never, you're never going to please everybody, but I think the points that are being made about the Carr in particular, like you said, it wasn't just that resident. I heard from numerous residents that were concerned about the paving project and the speeding. So whatever we can do to sort of speed up the process of looking at speed bumps or other traffic coming on Carr, I would truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Thank you. That's all the announcements we have.
Thank you. Now moving on to board announcements. Anybody like to go? Sir, Supervisor Cosmiki?
All right, thank you. Now I got to find him. Yeah, so first and foremost, I want to send my best wishes to Supervisor Gonzalez, who's not able to be here today. And I just want Bee to know that I wish her the best of health and a speedy recovery. And Bee, you are in our family's thoughts and prayers. So beyond that, I just wanted to mention that, just hoping that we can, as far as future items, I'm just hoping we can have that discussion about future items themselves and just the prioritization of future items, especially once we get a full board back in the near future. I just want to reemphasize, I just feel like that's an important topic just for us to all get on the same page, because there's so many items out there. But other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Curro?
Sure. I don't have much. Also, thoughts and prayers are out to Supervisor Gonzalez. Kind of want, I posted something on Facebook, kind of reminding everybody, just you never know what's happening in somebody else's life. You know, approach individuals with care and compassion. There's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that people don't know, and I just, I think it's just a good reminder to realize that you're not walking in someone else's shoes. And until you walk in their shoes, you don't know what they're going through. And until you walk in their shoes, you don't know what they're going through. I do want to congratulate my two counterparts here, Supervisor Setello and Supervisor Zanger. You don't even know what I'm congratulating you on. We graduated from New Supervisor Institute. Come on, this was something. We got a certificate and everything for attendance. It was great. A lot of, I will say, networking, a lot of hearing, our pains are not unique to our county. When you hear some of the things that are happening in other counties, you have to sit back sometimes and go, wow, that could be happening to us. And thank goodness, it's not. So I'm not going to go into some of those examples because they were a little too detailed. When it comes to ad-hocs, I know Hazel Hawkins is already on the agenda, so I'm going to skip that one. Communications ad hoc, Supervisor Zanger and I are on that, correct? And that last meeting was extremely uplifting. We want to thank the Sheriff's Department and Administration and OES for all their work and collaboration together. Everyone is having a say in getting ideas. It has hit some stumbling blocks, but we are plowing through those stumbling blocks. And we hope to have an update in the near future that we can bring back to the board as an agenda item. Besides that, I have no new agenda items. And take it away. Supervisor Zanger?
No? Okay, I just have a couple of announcements. One is, I toured the historical park with one of the board members. And it was really informative. It was great. I encourage all of my colleagues to do that tour as well. What they're doing out there is awesome. And I think it's just such a gem for our community. And so that was great. I met with Speaker of the Assembly, Rivas, with the Mayor of Hollister and the Mayor of San Juan Batista. And we just kind of talked a little bit about what all of us are facing within our county and kind of how to kind of work together and work with him and communicate with him. So great meeting, and I look forward to working with the mayors as well as Speaker Rivas. And lastly, we had our Vets Park Commission meeting last night. And I know that some of the sports teams and groups have been very eager to get some of the work out there done. We're working really, really hard. We want to make sure that as we go after this project and we complete it, that we're doing it right and everything is very well thought out. So some of the suggested plans, we had a few comments and some changes that we would like to see. So realistically, that project with re-striping and the lighting and food trucks and all of that will be completed by next summer. So I think that's kind of, I just want to be as open and transparent about that. I know it's been a long time coming, but we want to make sure that we get this done right. And safety is our utmost concern. And so there was a few tweaks that we needed to make. So that is all that I have. And so we will go ahead and go on to public comment. Do we have any public comment this morning?
We do. Good morning, everybody. If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. And on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. In chambers, first, we have Roxy Montoya, Montana? Sorry about that.
Good morning and happy Tuesday. Thank you for the opportunity, supervisors, including Bee and staff. I'm here this morning to represent the San Benito County Civil Grand Jury. And just to let you know that we've completed our training, we'll continue training, and that we are in term, which will end on June 30. So anyone who would like more information can find us on the Superior Court website. And much appreciated.
Next in chambers, Elia Salinas.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. And speaking of the grand jury, their grand jury report was out. And I want to emphasize again, please, for you all to bring it here and speak in public about it. I'm very concerned about the report with regards to the Sheriff's Office. The money is already allocated and it's in facilities. It's a facilities to update the air conditioning system and the roof. And I think also the refrigerator, but I think it already got taken care of. Like, but it's been going forward. I come here and I hear and I see the names and I see the numbers and where they're going to. And then they get a black mark from the grand jury because they haven't been able to do this. Well, that's a responsibility of you to make sure that they get that funding because it is there. I was disappointed on the Home Key Round Three. You all voted it down. And I know one of the supervisors says, well, we're not in the business of being landlords. Well, there are numerous municipalities in the state of California that are using that money because that is what the money is for. It is for cities and it is for counties to build affordable housing. And it's a shame that you turn down the possibility of getting some money here in San Benito County to do, to build affordable housing under the county. And I hope that you look into it some more, do your homework on how that money can benefit the residents here in San Benito County. The weather is going to be changing soon and we're going to be getting rain. And I think it's really important to find out how much has been cleared from the creeks, especially out on Lover's Lane, so that we know that it doesn't happen again. I'd like, I'd like to know what properties have been cleaned, what haven't, and what can we do as a county to get out there and make sure that it does get cleaned up because it's going to happen again. The FEMA money, you, oh, never mind, that's on your consent agenda. Never mind. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Veronica Lozama?
Good morning, Chair. Board of Supervisors, Veronica Lozama, Transportation Planner for the Council of Governments. I'm here this morning to announce two items. The first is to inform you that Caltrans will be doing some major modifications to the intersection of State Route 156 and 25. You should have all received an email from me with more information on that. Terry Thompson, Caltrans Project Manager, is on Zoom. So she'll be providing you with more information on that project. The second item that I wanted to present is that the COG will be hosting the California Transportation on September 20th and 24th. So I wanted to cordially invite you to that town hall. And more information will be provided to the board in the upcoming weeks. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
On Zoom, I have Terry Thompson. You've been unmuted and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Terry Thompson. Thank you, Board of Supervisors and staff, for having me here today. I'm the Caltrans Project Manager for the Route 25, 156 Roundabout Project. And as Veronica mentioned, I have some additional information for you. On Wednesday, August 16th and Thursday, August 17th, Caltrans will implement overnight traffic controls at the intersection of Highway 25 and 156. Please expect delays between the hours of 7:00 PM and 5:00 AM each night. The night work is necessary to transform the intersection from a four-way signalized intersection to a new temporary traffic configuration. The temporary traffic configuration will operate similar to a one-lane roundabout. Upon reopening on Thursday morning, August 17th, travelers will be required to slow down and yield to traffic already in the roundabout before entering. There will be no signalized traffic lights. The lights will flash yellow. And travelers will experience new advanced alerts as they approach the intersection. These alerts include a roundabout sign with flashing beacon, signal signs, and rumble strips to advise the traveler of the traffic change ahead. Once inside the roundabout, vehicles will follow the signage to the exit to their desired direction. Speed limits within the project area remain reduced to 35 miles per hour for the safety of travelers and the construction crew. Caltrans is coordinating with the CHP and other local agencies to ensure safety throughout the duration of this work. The second night of roadwork will permit crews to place temporary barriers in the middle of the intersection to protect workers during the next phase of the turbo roundabout construction. And approximately one week in advance of this night closure, I mean, night control, Caltrans will place portable electronic message signs to alert travelers of the upcoming change to the intersection. The temporary single-lane roundabout traffic configuration will remain in place throughout the end of construction in early 2024, when the new multi-lane turbo roundabout is open to the public. And Veronica from the COG has some additional handouts about this issue. Are there any questions?
No, there are none.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Barbara Thompson. You've been unmuted and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is, my name is Barbara Thompson. I'm appearing remotely today due to having tested positive for COVID. But I wanted to say a few words in regard to Agenda Item 1.8. It's been my privilege to serve as County Counsel for San Benito County since December 31, 2017.
A comment when we get to consent agenda? Is that okay?
Go to the next one? Okay, so next, we have Valerie Eglin. You've been unmuted, ma'am, and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you.
Oops. Ms. Eglin, you need to unmute yourself.
Oh, again?
There you go.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'm with Reach San Benito Parks Foundation. And with schools starting, we've got track practice and football practice and all these things going on. And it brings to mind that the Anza Trail, when it was first created as a county rec trail, was designed gate-to-gate to be 5K. And it was for the purpose of the high school track teams across country to utilize as a true country space. So from gate-to-gate and back, you've got a 10K distance. So we've been talking to the track team at the high school with projected possibilities and going to Anzar perhaps to see if they've got need there for space and accommodation. I think that was it. So we're excited about that and hope that we can exploit that. So have a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Do we have any public comment for consent?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. And on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I do have Ms. Elia Salinas in chambers.
Thank you. 1.4, 1.6, 1.9, 1.12, 1.20. I'll start with 20. Since we're, this is going to be happening in November, I would, I think that we should start focusing on putting the attention out now. This is regarding the mattresses, the mattress collection. Let's get going on advertising to get as many people out there as possible. I mean, it is already free to drop off your mattress and you still see them along the roadway. So the more, the more information you can get out there as soon as possible, that way people can prepare themselves for it. 1.12, I don't have my glasses, but I know that there's a certain amount of money here that is being allocated with regards to those folks that were left without homes out on Lover's Lane and were affected by the floods. It's my understanding that if you receive FEMA money, you cannot qualify for the money that the county gives you. So if most of those people out there qualified for FEMA money, what is going to happen to these funds? So I understand that they call it double-dipping. You can't get FEMA. FEMA is requiring, did give some money, gave them first and last month's rent and assistance for so, for so a long period of time. The county's also offering that. So I have a question, if they're not going to be allowed to use it, what's going to happen with the money? So 1.9 is, I'm sorry, 1.3. 1.3 with regards to, there is money being allocated for inpatient psychiatric hospitals and medical providers. And I'm just astounded that with the millions of dollars that are allocated every year because they don't have the services here in San Benito County and you have to go outside a county, it's my understanding there's already contracts with hospitals. So why is there, why does this say it's uncontracted already? I thought that they're already contracted. So how does, how does somebody fall between the lines that they end up going into a facility that's not already contracted with the county? So then 1.1.5, no, sorry, not 1.5. 1.6 is the contribution to the animal shelter for, I think, $90,000. I can't read really well. Is this money's going to help to continue the operation? Or are these funds being allocated just to pay for administrative fees, to pay for the employees? Every year, it comes back through the grand jury report, you know, what's, you know, the failures of the animal shelter. And how are they accountable? How is the county going to be able to audit or keep an eye on the money that are going out there and how it's being used and how they still fail to meet the standards? So they require it, okay, Pence and Long, 1.9, Pence and Long to represent the county in Western Resources Legal Center litigation. Not to exceed $150,000. Pence and Long, are they not already our county counsel? So they represent here only in a meeting and then anything else is going to be going out to them? Or are we also going to be using, we have, the county has already had relationships with law firms that are being used. So how do we, how, what is the accountability? What is the auditing system? I am not saying anything negative on Pence and Long, but how do we know that Pence and Long are not going to be just giving themselves these contracts? Okay, so there's got to be some kind of accountability, some kind of an audit system to keep track of this. I think that's it. Thank you.
I also have Barbara Thompson on Zoom. You've been unmuted. You'll need to unmute yourself as well. There you go.
Thanks, thank you very much. I just wanted to say a few words. I've been working with the county since August 2008. And there's been so many dedicated, hard-working county staff that I've been fortunate to work with over the years. And also, working in local government has always been a privilege because I feel that the work that we do impacts the community in which we live now and for years into the future. I'm excited about the opportunity to focus on the area of purchasing. We can make our county purchasing processes more streamlined and more transparent. Streamlining purchasing, using existing cooperative agreements from other jurisdictions, informing more vendors, including local vendors, of local bidding opportunities, and potentially implementing alternative public works bidding procedures will result in economic savings and savings in staff time, allowing other essential county work to be accomplished. Thank you in advance for your consideration of Item 1.8. Thank you.
I have no other public comment.
Thank you. Does any of the board members have any items that they'd like to pull?
Just one point. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. 1.17, please.
Okay, thank you. Any others? No? Okay, so we'll pull Item 1.17 for Supervisor Cosmiki. And we'll return to that after our regular agenda. So now moving So now moving on to regular.
Madam Chair, can you go ahead?
Oh, I'm sorry. I always forget that part. We need to approve all the others. Somebody like to make a motion?
Move to approve as recommended, minus 1.17.
All second bet?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? 4-0, thank you. Thank you for the reminder. All right, now we're moving on to regular agenda. Okay, the first item, Item 2.1, discuss and approve a contract with ECG Management Consultants in an amount not to exceed $110,000.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we have the privilege of having Cecilia Montalvo here. She, um, uh, is a contract, under contract with the county for hospital services. So I'd like to invite her up to the podium. She'll be presenting this particular item. I just want to preface by saying that there has been a lot of work, um, that Cecilia and staff, as well as the ad hock's been working on to address, um, uh, being able to assist, um, the hospital, uh, through these trials sometimes. So appreciate you coming today and, and giving us a brief presentation on this, on this contract. Thank you, Cecilia.
Always a pleasure to come to Hollister. My new favorite place to come. Good morning, Supervisors, and thank you for having me. I want to present to you some of the major concepts behind the contract with ECG. But perhaps before I do that, since it, things move so fast, maybe just give you a little update about the Healthcare District Board meeting last night so that you don't ask that question later about how this fits together. The, uh, San Benito County Healthcare District did meet last night to consider a letter of intent with a company called American Advanced Management. They are out of Modesto and do own a number of small hospitals. Their primary focus is on long-term care, skilled nursing, but they do operate acute hospitals. Most importantly for our discussion today, the, uh, the action that was recommended to the board was to enter into a non-binding, non-exclusive letter of intent and to continue to negotiate with this company. It doesn't reflect a decision on their part and there is a very clear desire on the part of the board of the Healthcare District to know of any and all options that are available for the hospital's future operation. So I, I'm addressing that upfront simply because I, I think that, uh, proceeding with the work that we'll discuss in a minute, um, is, is entirely continues to be appropriate in the context of where they are. So your item this morning is this, is a contract with ECG. This company is one that I personally have worked with for years. They're very well-known in the healthcare industry, doing the sort of man, healthcare management consulting and financial analysis. It was a company that worked with Salinas Valley Health five years ago when Salinas Valley considered a relationship with Hazel Hawkins. And it was the CEO's belief that because they already were familiar with, um, the hospital, that they could very quickly update their prior work and help us all understand what perhaps the benefits might be of having, uh, Salinas Valley provide management support to the hospital and also to ensure that that type of relationship would provide benefit and a long-term, stable future for the hospital. They anticipate doing this work with, I'm, I hope it's four weeks. They said four to six weeks. Um, and then I think at the same time, we'll be considering and talking with the administration and board at Salinas Valley about what that relationship might look like. So the request today again is a contract not to exceed $110,000 for them to complete this work, um, and, and hopefully help us develop an option, uh, that could also be considered alongside others that I'm hopeful will come in. Any questions?
I think let's go to public comment first and then we can go to the board for questions.
Okay. If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. In chambers, I have Elias Salinas.
Good morning. I am in favor and I hope that you all agree that, uh, it's in the best interest of San Benito County residents to try to save San, to try to save Hazel Hawkins Hospital. The, uh, meeting last night was regarding, uh, accepting and going forward to doing negotiations with a company called American Advanced Management Group. Their specialty is long-term care. Their specialty is skilled nursing. That is not what San Benito County requires. We need a hospital. We need an operating, they, they won't even offer OB, OBG there, okay? So if a person goes into the hospital, if I go to the hospital and I had a miscarriage, here at Hazel Hawkins Hospital, they would not treat me there. They are going to send me out of county somewhere else because I could not be seen should this company take over. So it is very, very important for women's health. It is important for children's health and it is important for the men in this community that we try as a community to save the hospital as an emergency room hospital. I can visualize, um, this company, and I haven't done my homework, I've done very little on it, but enough to know that they do not honor union nursing contracts. They will hire you as a nurse, but you're not going to be union. It is a private company. And what would happen to our residents that are nurses there? Would they have to go somewhere else to go work? So in, I want everything possible for this hospital to stay open, but it's got to be, it has to happen with the right partnership for the best interests of the entire community. And I believe that, um, this ECG, because I tell you again, I don't have my glasses on, um, would be the best because they know the history. They were there. We were all at those meetings in 2017, 20, maybe 2018, when Salinas was here, Salinas Valley Medical was here talking about taking over. And then there was the, you know, and then it's, if I understand correctly, it was that there, the, the, the finances were toxic at Hazel Hawkins Hospital. If the finances are toxic, it is because of the management and the board that has allowed that to happen at Hazel Hawkins Hospital. So please approve this contract and let's see what we can do to keep Hazel Hawkins hope, open as an emergency room hospital. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Roxy Montana.
Good morning again. It's unusual that I would get up and speak on two items, but I'd like to remind everyone and the public that there is a Thursday afternoon meeting at the Stradivariety Information Building. And we meet from 2 o'clock to 4 o'clock as citizens. There are civic leaders, there are physicians groups and other people represented. And we, um, are there to get updates to the ever and fast-changing information. My email address is R-O-X-Y-M-O-N-T-A-N-A with the number 2 after it, uh, at AOL.com should anyone, uh, need additional information about our, our gathering of citizens. It is open to all people. Thank you.
On Zoom, I have Rob Bernowski. You've been unmuted and you have three minutes.
Good morning, uh, Madam Chair and, uh, Supervisors. With best wishes to Supervisor Gonzalez, if she's listening. I am in favor of this contract and, uh, here's why. So, um, the, your colleagues on the San Benito, uh, Healthcare District Board, they are wonderful people, honorable to be serving and, um, overall they, they are, um, they're good people for the community. But I must say that, um, they are not used to dealing with the sophisticated issues, um, that come up before a board. It's, it's, you know, it's been a very sanguine situation for them for a long time. And now you have this very important thing to the county that they have control over and, um, they need a level of, uh, well, sophistication to help them make the best decision. And I believe that the county will play a huge role in that. With the information that you're going to get from ECG, um, you will have insight and you can perhaps, uh, help the community to understand, um, what all the moving parts to Hazel Hawkins Hospital is, what the difficulties are, but also, um, what losing Hazel Hawkins would mean to a community. The entity that was presented at the Health District last night, they're, they're a fine organization. I, I can tell. I, uh, visited one of their facilities yesterday and, and, uh, you know, uh, they seem very competent. But as, uh, has been spoken of here before, they do have a specialty in long-term care. When they, they talk about how they expand, uh, and last night, there's a lot of talk about how much they've expanded in the hospitals that they have taken over with the healthcare facilities, but they expand the nursing home part, not necessarily the hospital part. And so, um, we all have to be positive. Every word they say has to be parsed and understood and put in writing. So, uh, I'm going to speak about another part of that and on your next topic. But, um, what you're doing is a benefit to the community. It will be money very well spent. So, uh, I encourage you to vote, um, yes on that. Thank you very much. That concludes my comment.
Thank you. I have no further public comment.
Thank you. Okay, bringing it back to the board. Anybody have any questions, comments? Supervisor Kuro?
Being, uh, am I on? Yeah, okay. Being on the ad hoc and having the opportunity to meet with staff about this contract and the need for it, I am very much in support of this contract and I want to thank Cecilia, administration, you know, that even, you know, in talking and meeting with the, the Healthcare District and the ad hoc members, they definitely agree. We, we want to save the hospital in some way, shape or form. I am not a supporter of a long-term care senior facility. So I am open to definitely pursuing this, uh, contract with, um, I'm going to have it, ECG and Salinas Valley Memorial and hoping that we do come up with a viable offer that will, uh, help save the hospital, especially for our urgent and emergency, not just urgent, but emergency care services and hopefully grow it for the future. I, I'm looking at the hospital district as our future and trying to get more of our residents, um, to believe in the hospital. We know historically, I'm one of those prior people that would drive out of town because my doctor told me to. I'm, hate that. I want to bring, uh, respect and pride into, back into our hospital so that we keep our nurses and doctors working locally and living locally. So I am very much in support of this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, I, I think of this as, um, you know, we really only have one, one shot at this in, in reality and it's such an important issue. There isn't a more important issue in Samyel County right now than saving this hospital and doing it the right way. And, uh, you know, 115 years or wherever we're at right now, it's all on the line. And, you know, I, I just, um, I certainly support this contract. It's, uh, it keeps the, the options open. That's really the key here is to have multiple options because we've learned in the past that, you know, the hospital has gone through similar circumstances in the past and there have been a number of suitors. I don't know the exact number, but I know it's a decent number of suitors. And here we are all these years later and none of those options worked out. So you can't just count on one option. And so this is a very wise move for the community. I certainly think it's a wise investment for the county and, uh, I think the only responsible direction is to move forward. And I'm hopeful that Hazel Hawkins Leadership will see that, um, this is logical to keep the door open for multiple good options. Thank you.
Okay, I, I agree with both, with both what Supervisor Kuro and Cosmiki said. So, um, would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? 4-0, thank you. Okay, Item 2.2, adopt a resolution granting, granting San Benito Healthcare District, DBA Hazel Hawkins Memorial Hospital Temporary Transfer Funds.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members and members of the public. Uh, the item before you is a resolution and a temporary transfer agreement. Back in December 15th of 2022, your board, uh, adopted Resolution 2022-166, granting San Benito Healthcare District Fund Transfer under Article 16, Section 6 of the State Constitution, um, with interest, and they also approved a temporary transfer agreement. This item, on July 27th, 2023, the Health District passed Resolution 2023-31, authorizing the district to execute an agreement with the county, um, for a temporary transfer agreement. So before your, uh, consideration today is, uh, a resolution granting San Benito Health, oh no, San Benito County to enter into that temporary, temporary transfer agreement. Um, with that, I will pass it back to your board for dialogue.
Okay, so should we go to public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. In chambers, I have Elias Salinas.
Thank you. So one of the things that we have learned, or I have learned, I should say, um, is that Hazel Hawkins Hospital's administration is currently running on borrowed money. Okay, so from the beginning of the year through the end of the, uh, the end of summer, they've, they have stated that they needed money and they got, they have received $11 million. And that was also San Benito County's, the same thing right now that happened back, that was back in April, if I remember correctly. And so now they're asking for, uh, another advance. I would, they are spending millions of dollars. There, uh, Rob, I hope you can say what the number is when you speak. They have, I, I believe it's over $2 million already, just on their consultants and their attorneys. And they have a law firm that literally claimed that they had no experience in bankruptcy, but they're paying that law firm to represent them in bankruptcy. They, I would just caution, I, I obviously want this hospital to stay open, absolutely. But I would caution actually giving them the entire money because you don't have to give them this entire money right now. Because they have proven, that the administration has proven that they don't have the skills and the experience. They have an interim CEO without any experience whatsoever and she's relying on consultants and all the consultants are doing is billing, 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 and they're getting paid. So this $2 million that you're going about to do right now, I would please cut it in half or something. They requested, um, SB1, uh, I'm not even going to, that, there's a bill for distressed hospital, rural hospitals in the state of California. They spent $135,000 on a consultant to help them apply for this grant. Yet they only applied for $10 million and the CFO, when I questioned that, he said, "Well, that sounded like a good number." It's not about a good number. Why didn't they ask for $40 million? Why didn't they ask for $50 million, even $20 million? You know you're going to get less. So if you ask for $10 million, you're going to get less. And that's the leadership right there. And if you give them this entire money, it's going to get spent and it's going to get spent on attorneys and it's going to get spent on the administrative fees. I caution you, please. I'm not telling you to say no to them, but I think please cut back some of this money. Thank you.
And on Zoom, we have Rob Bernowski. You've been unmuted and you have three minutes.
Surprise, surprise. I, uh, I understand that the county may not even have a choice in this. I mean, that's just a guess, but I, I would wonder if the Board of Supervisors has looked into this fact that Hazel, the Healthcare District has, um, general obligation bonds outstanding. Those bonds are collateralized by the property taxes that you are now going to advance. to advance. And I'm just wondering, is, has anybody checked on the legality of, of the, you are advancing funds to them that are collateralizing those bonds, which, again, my understanding is the county would be on the hook for the general obligation bonds if Hazel Hawkins or the healthcare district were not able to repay those debts. And again, this is just Rob, you know, the accountant, you know, who reads through contracts and ongoing, it's collateralized. How can you divert those funds? And, and would the county be on the hook for it? So anyway, it just seems like there could be a conflict with some, with the bond covenant there and legally, can you, how do you guys fit with that? And then, you know, just adding on to Elia's comments, remember, these folks have spent over a million dollars on their financial advisory services, but they will not disclose what those financial advisors are doing. They have denied my public records request. They redacted 100% of it. Plus their bankruptcy attorneys, plus, plus, plus. I mean, they're spending all this money that could be going into the healthcare system and for the patients and the community. And again, this gets into the sloppiness of everything that's going on. So please do think carefully about that, especially because last night, the question was asked, who, if AAMG acquires the hospital, the hospital, who gets the property taxes? And there, yeah, another attorney firm that they are paying said, "Well, right now, AAMG would get those property taxes." Well, again, wait a minute. Aren't you guys on the hook for the general obligation bonds and aren't the general obligation bonds collateralized by the property taxes? I mean, I know they are because I went and I looked at the general obligation bonds. But what does that mean to you guys? The property taxes, that the general obligation bonds are collateralized by the property taxes? Thank you for listening. That concludes my comments.
And I have no further public comment.
Thank you. Okay, bringing it back to the board. Supervisor Zenger?
Thank you. Yeah, so I have some thoughts on this. So the way I see it, this is essentially what we did before. It's an advance on the money that they're already entitled to. However, my concern would be if a change were to happen with the status of the hospital, in the hospital, like if it were to go from public to private, then would they still be entitled that money? Because if not, then the county would essentially be giving money to a private business for no real reason. And so that was my concern and I spoke with staff about it and spoke with those much smarter than myself. And unfortunately, no one really knows how the situation plays out. No one really knows the, the full extent of the rules here because it's sort of foreign territory. We haven't really been here before. But that's the question I have is, is we give them this advance, but then if they cease to be a public entity or a public hospital district like this, then we're giving them money that they normally may not be entitled to. So we're just paying a, a business for fun, I guess, for no reason really. And so that's, that's my concern and sort of a big question mark. And so personally, I think if there's no immediate need for this, I'd like to just put it on hold until we can really get a better understanding of this. So you can figure out what our options are and if we would be able to get that money back in the case that this were to happen. So those are my thoughts, but I'd like to hear the rest of the board.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, so considering, first of all, thank you Supervisor Zenger for the very thoughtful question in advance of the meeting that you apparently asked and spoke with staff about. And it sounds like there isn't clarity on this in the moment. So I think it would certainly be prudent of the board to at least temporarily put off approving the property tax allocation so we can get some clearer answers as to what the implications are. I think, you know, if, if you take out the, the sort of gray area that we're talking about here, I certainly want to help the hospital and provide, you know, it is, it is eventually theoretically, you know, the hospital's property tax revenue. So we don't want to get in the way of what, you know, they're necessarily entitled to. But I also will agree with Supervisor Zenger that with the question hanging over regarding ultimately what happens, if there's a sale, I just think it, we just have to get answers to that. I would also add, you know, considering where we're at in the process and that we're potentially in the, the last turn of the, you know, this circumstance here, maybe, maybe not, we don't know that for sure. But I would also, you know, considering the amount of money it is, I would also put it out there that we might want to consider putting some sort of strings attached to this. If we do do a property tax allocation, we all have strong opinions. If we have, for instance, a consensus on X, Y, or Z as a board, I think it would certainly make sense to try to work with the hospital district to see if we can have some level of cooperation on whatever those interests are for the county, whether we're talking about, you know, we've heard talk of speculation about a special election, who's going to fund the special election. We've heard, you know, we have, some people have concerns about the potentially having a, this AAMG company purchase the hospital. So I just think that should potentially hopefully be part of the conversation as well. If we're going to hand over $2.4 million, I certainly think we have the right to put some strings attached to it. Thank you.
Supervisor Kuro?
All great questions. I appreciate my colleagues and their great questions. These funds, and I apologize if, if this was in the backup, this was just like what was done by the last board. It's an advancement of property taxes. This is an advancement only through the December of this year, is my understanding. It's not going through the spring. Uh, sorry, yeah, December of this year, not the spring of next year. Is that correct? Do we have?
Yeah, we have.
But thank you, Joe Paul, for coming down. I really appreciate it.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors, members of the public. Uh, no, the allocation, the advance is for July 1st through June 30th.
Of 2024?
Of 2024.
Okay. Okay. I wanted to clarify that. I wasn't crystal clear. So this is the full advance of 85% of the property taxes coming in this next fiscal year.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you so much, Joe Paul, for coming down for that. Did Hazel Hawkins approach us or the hospital, the Samanito Healthcare District approached us for this advance or was this taken on by the county, being as nice as we are?
They did approach staff and we did request a resolution from their board.
Okay, so it did come direct from them. So they did ask for it. Okay. It's my understanding that as Supervisor Cosmickey mentioned, there is talk that if there is a transfer of over 50% of the assets of the hospital, it would go to a special election and the voters would have to approve that transfer of anything over 50% to, if it's AMR or if, whomever it may be. Do I have that right? Just checking before I.
Yes, that, that's the big question mark that staff has. We don't know what that is. They have not submitted anything to the elections office. I have Francisco here to confirm that if he wants to come up and confirm that. But we have not seen any language. If it's going to be a lease, it's going to be a purchase, we don't know. So go ahead, Francisco.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Madam Chair. So at this point, I've had communications with their county council about what the cost would be, timelines and different election codes that apply to this. However, I haven't gotten an indication of when they're going to file. Upon filing, we do have to have an election within 88 days. So essentially, and then that will have to come to the Board of Supervisors for approval as well.
And my understanding, if it is a, and this is rough numbers, if it's a special election, it would be approximately $500,000. And if it is consolidated with the March primary, it would be approximately $50,000.
That is correct. So.
I mean, just rough numbers.
Rough numbers. Just to point something out, this will be, the, the discussion that's being had is to have a no mail ballot election through the entire county. However, because there's not a general election that's scheduled, this, and it's going to happen within 88 days, the cost is slightly higher than it would be if it was in the general election because it's going to have to essentially be happening in three months.
Okay, I'm going to throw a really big hypothetical out to county council. Hypothetically, if it was over 50% and that did cause an election, or whatever the number may be that the hospital may have to have a special election, can there be wording in there that if it is going to a private entity, that this entity gives that money back? That the advance is only valid if it stays a hospital district and the transfer does not happen in a special election? I know that's kind of a vague question. I'm trying to come up with the, the string, yeah, that we want to attach.
My understanding of the California constitution on these transfers is that they can only go to public agencies. Private agencies can't receive this money. And so if there was a balance, let's say the transfer occurred, the, the advances were made pursuant to Article 16, Section 6, those funds would go to a district. If there were funds left, and those are for operational obligations only, if there were funds left after a transfer, those funds would have to be reimbursed. They wouldn't be entitled to them.
Okay. I like that. I'm really happy about that. So the question is, can we have or do we need to alter the wording that there is an audit process on this funding, that it has to be utilized for, you know, it can't, can't go to AMG's costs or any private entity? Or are we pretty covered?
I'm sorry. I'm, I don't think you need that because the, the California constitution itself defines how these monies are used and they can only be used for public agency operational obligations.
Okay.
Not private agencies.
However, I think it's the cart before the horse in this matter because we don't know what, if, what they're going to do. Are they going to, is it going to go to a private, are they going to convert to a private agency or not? And that's, that's the conundrum that, that staff is in. If they do, you know, it's AB8 funding, it does have to go to a public entity. So it, it could be, it could be utilizing it for fire service or other, other service, you know, another agency that's going to be doing that work, potentially using AB8. But I think that's the issue that we don't really know yet because we haven't received any detailed information on what they potentially could do.
Okay, so potentially a string could be, we, before this money is released, we could amend this, that they have to give us documentation of what this money will be utilized for before we'll release. Could that be a string?
I, I would recommend, the board give staff direction to, to work on this and come up with a, a solution that we could work on. Because I think right now, we would have, and again, it's hypothetical. Once we get information from them, then I think we could move forward with something and document it.
I'm going to have to agree with not only the public comment, but with my colleagues up here, that just handing over money right now, when there's this chance of transfer, I, I think it's a very big risk and we need a little more assurity of where the money's being spent. That's my comment. Thank you. For all your comments.
Yeah, it seems a little bit preliminary at this point for us to make this decision today. It seems like there's a lot of information we still need and I think it would be great to maybe have somebody from the hospital that would have been here kind of asking or, so for me, it seems like the best thing is really kind of to table this until a future date. Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah, just a quick question. Is there, is the hospital giving any, any indication of when they will inform us of what the, the plan is with this company? Or is it just, because I know, we don't know exactly what the agreement's going to look like, but?
I, I have two people that probably can answer. I have Cecilia that was there yesterday. She could probably answer. I know that Francisco also talked to staff, so I'd like to invite both of them up and they can probably provide a, an answer to that question.
I think that the, the hospital's preference would be to continue to negotiate with this company and any others that come forward and have a transaction proposed that they're comfortable with by the end of this year. There are a lot of moving parts in this and that includes the fact that the bankruptcy itself is being challenged in U.S. Bankruptcy Court in San Jose, their eligibility for bankruptcy. And that trial will not occur until December. So I think it, it's actually going to be quite some time before, they, they're anxious. I'm sure they're, they're talking about moving forward quickly, but these things do take time. So I, I think it will. I wanted to mention one thing that I'm hoping David will agree with me about because I'm not a lawyer, but that is that there are healthcare districts all over California that have sold their hospitals and many of them, to the extent that they have not dissolved, which you can also do, they continue to receive tax money even though they no longer operate hospitals. The healthcare districts are called healthcare districts, not hospital districts. And in the case of these other districts that have no longer operate hospitals, many of them have chosen to address other pressing healthcare needs in their community using those tax proceeds. So the tax doesn't just go away because they don't operate a hospital. I, I'm hoping David would agree with that or, or somebody more qualified.
Yeah, well, no, the district stays, if, if the district stays viable and sanctioned by the state as a district, then yes, they, they will continue to receive the money. If I could also comment on that question. Pretty much if, if a jurisdiction is part of the AB8, part of the number of agencies that get the one, part of the 1%, they remain there until there's a successor agency is going to, you know, perform the work or the type of operation that, you know, that, that they, you know, that they currently perform. For example, the Pacheco Pass Water District was inactive for many years, but they continued to receive part of the AB8. Money's just sitting there in this fund. Wasn't being used. It was just, it was sitting there in, in the, in the county treasury. Recently, they were, you know, reactivated and, you know, they had the, the funds available to use. So, you know, with, with regard to the hospital district, it's a, an AB8 district. I don't, you know, I really don't know how it's, you know, how, you know, if the assets are transferred over to a public, to a non-public agency, the district still remains. That's, you know, really, they're just asking the, the public, the authority, get, to ask for the authority to move, to transfer assets. But the district does not defunct. They continue to receive AB8 distribution. There's a lot of unknowns here, but that is pretty much unknown. And I, I feel, I feel confident that the board can, can move forward with this resolution and that, you know, taxpayers' dollars are not going to be going to a private organization. They, they're going to be used for, by the district.
I guess just one of my questions. Is there any urgency with this item today? I mean, do we, do we know? Is there, Gracie, did anyone with the healthcare district or the hospital express that there was an urgency that we had to do this today? Or do we have maybe, you know, possibly bring it back at our next board meeting when we have maybe a little bit more time to have some of these conversations and get some of these questions answered? Do we know? Is there any timeliness issue with this?
I don't think so, no.
I don't believe they.
We could, yeah.
Okay, so Supervisor Kuro?
I think you made a motion, didn't you, to table?
I, I did.
You did.
Suggest a table.
Uh, are you making the motion to table or postpone?
I think it makes sense at this point, so yes.
I agree. I would second that.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, so let's, we're going to possibly, and possibly bring it back.
We'll bring it back. We'll bring it back as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for all of the comments. Let's go ahead and take a five, 10-minute break right now, please.
How's it going? Do you actually drive over on these mornings, or you just...
Oh, no, I was here last night.
Oh, okay.
Consideration of developing a ad hoc.
Thank you, Tracy. Do we have any public comment on this item?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board. Any comments, questions, any? No. Anybody would really like to sit on the commission? Okay, I know.
The ad hoc.
I completely, Madam Chair, I'm so sorry. I completely.
Sorry, 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 ad hoc.
Support the ad hoc, but right now with the ad hocs that I'm already exist on, I would like to support someone else being on the ad hocs. That's my only comment.
Supervisor Zenger, did you have anything? Okay, I did speak with Supervisor Gonzalez about this item and she is, has been working on this, has been very important to her. She actually asked to sit on this ad hoc and so I would suggest that Supervisor Gonzalez sit on this ad hoc. Is there anyone else that would like to sit on this ad hoc? Or if not, I will go ahead and I will, I will offer myself to sit on this ad hoc as well, if you all are agreeable to that. Okay, so it will be Supervisor Gonzalez and myself that will sit on this ad hoc.
I'll second that.
Do we need that in a motion?
I think so.
Yes, okay, so.
And I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
So four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tracy. Okay, moving on to item two point four, Office of Emergency Services. We're going to receive an overview of the 2023 Winter Flooding After Action Report. Chris Mangano.
Good morning. So I am now representing OES, and thank you for having me. I'm going to give a brief review of the after action report that was conducted by our consultants at Hagerty Consulting. An after action report is required after any incident. It is a review of the response and recovery of the event. The report captures key lessons learned and best practices. It is required by Cal, OES, and FEMA and highlights both the strengths and areas for improvement. The commit, the comments and opinions gathered in this report from county government leaders, as well as other private, public, and non-governmental partners, do not necessarily reflect accuracy rather than the viewpoint of that individual. For example, a comment was noted that we need a plan. However, we have a plan. An updated EOP was actually submitted to the state for approval on January 3rd, ironically a day before the flood. It was re, it has been approved by Cal, OES, and is now with FEMA, and it looks just like this. And this is a draft since it's not finally approved. But we do have, I brought a sampling of plans. We have ranging from severe weather center plans, evacuations, our operational area coordination plan through our medical branch, public safety power plans, crisis communication plans, et cetera. So we do have plans. So at the request of the board, a neutral third party was selected and awarded to Hagerty Consulting. A digital survey and stakeholder interviews were conducted and analyzed to complete and identify both strengths and areas for improvement. This executive summary is the nuts and bolts of the report as it identifies key recommendations and corrective actions. Training and education was identified as the top priority needed for the public, county staff, and county leadership, not only to support the EOC, but understand the roles, responsibilities, and procedures. We're in the process of coordinating relevant training with the Bay Area UWASI and the California Specialized Training Institute, the leading entity in training throughout California. This is not an exhaustive or inclusive chart, but rather summarizes the key countywide activities that took place with events with the storms starting when we conducted evacuations and, and when the EOC was activated. And this summarizes the recovery process and where we are today. The organizational findings outlines the 10 key strengths and improvement and areas for improvement. It is mandated by the state that we follow the standardized emergency management system, or SEMS. While the section chiefs and OES staff demonstrated a strong understanding and followed SEMS, other EOC participants did not. The recommendation is to encourage participation when trainings are available. The need for additional training is detailed in this slide. As mentioned previously, we are diligently working with training, with the training institutes. We continue to recommend mandatory training for all employees, including new hires. In an EOC or an emergency operations center, job action sheets will be available to all activated personnel. We are recommending a countywide accessible shared drive to house key documents and resources currently and moving forward. Coordination and communication was documented as strength as we offered multiple communication platforms. We are also very active with general communication and coordination with regional, excuse me. Prior to the winter storms, we purchased an app-based platform to utilize internally. County staff, EOC personnel to be more efficiently commu, will be using this to communicate more efficiently with activations and needs. Training is in process now and the app will be fully implemented in September. Additionally, together with Santa Cruz Regional 911, our 911 dispatching center, we're implementing a more robust alert and warning system that will be replacing code red. The new program called Genesis will be implemented over the next few months. We will be launching an awareness campaign beginning with our employee, our emergency preparation fair that is going to be in September. Finally, the board allocated funds last year to purchase National Weather Service battery-operated weather alert radios. They are pre-programmed for localized weather hazards and emergencies issued by the National Weather Service and will automatically send an alert, providing the seconds needed to evacuate or seek shelter. We started distributing the radios last week at National Line Out, and we will be working with the Sheriff's Office, Health and Human Services, and the Food Bank to distribute them to those in need the most. And I have them in the courtyard if anybody's interested. With several members of the board being brand new, we realized some challenges occurred. Going forward, meeting with new supervisors prior to the start of their term, a basic understanding of their role and understanding of an emergency will be taking place. We are developing an annex to our emergency operations plan called the Supervisor's Guide to Emergency Operations that we have received several samples from other counties. We will be implementing that within the next six months. Although the county has established a number of agreements, contracts, and MOUs to respond to an incident, we will continue to explore additional partners. Care and sheltering falls under the leadership of Health and Human Services. Often, we will utilize our partnership with the American Red Cross to provide care and shelter, which includes the wraparound services, food and other basic necessities. In this event, mainly because every county around us was inundated with the same flood, Health and Human Services assumed the role quickly and professionally. Director Tracy Belton, her staff, especially Maria, and the others who supported the care and shelter branch were phenomenal to work with, or should I say, continued to support the care and shelter branch of those still displaced by storms. Education, training, leadership by in, and enforcement for the response utilizing disaster service workers are key in moving forward. Disaster service workers are county employees that by law are disaster service workers. The county continues to support the notion of a VOAD, which is a volunteer organization active in disasters. We hope to better establish emergency response and support in relation to community-based organizations. We utilize the mutual aid program and resource requests through Cal, OES effectively. This slide specifically mentions the need to collaborate with fish and wildlife, although we completely agree this is not a typical emergency response action, but we are working closely with them. As documented in the report, we had many strengths with debris management. Areas from, areas for improvement will be addressed in, in training and education. Our PIO at the time did an outstanding job with all communications relating to the storm. She vetted the information and effectively disseminated messaging via several channels. We quickly realized the need for messaging in multiple languages and reached out to employees as disaster work, service workers for translation. One of the largest challenges we faced with communication was from county personnel, community partners, and the public. At one point, the state received inaccurate, unvetted information that we, San Benito County, had 80,000 displaced residents due to the floods, which resulted in the state sending personnel here to verify, which took away from valuable, time away from state emergency management and local EMS, OES personnel. This is an indication of the need for training and to, training and education for county staff, community partners, and the public, and an example of the consequences of misinformation. To address road closures and evacuation areas, we have partnered with Perimeter, an app-based program that will link our alert and warning system, easily and in real time identifying road closures and evacuations. We are finalizing the zones now. There is a state, regional, and local process for resource requests and tracking. Training and education will reinforce this. Limited or lack of resources and staff were identified as contributing factors to response challenges. Finally, most of the areas for improvement noted with damage and unmet needs. They have been addressed or already existed, specifically the new perimeter app for evacuations and road closures. Some things are beyond our control, such as digital tracking, that is not an option currently through the state. We continue to recommend a VOAD, the volunteer organization, to address individual recovery and needs since it is not in the scope of work for local jurisdictions. And this concludes the brief overview of the after action report provided from Hagerty Consulting.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I do have in chambers, Elias Salinas.
Thank you. When Ms. Mangano says brief, it was brief. I don't know if, I don't know what was on page two, three, four, five, and seven. She just went through, wasn't even, there was no, no presentation on it. So I don't know, as the public didn't see what was on part of that report. I appreciate the fact that she went on to say what the strengths and, and the weaknesses were, and I'm kind of, I was surprised and I'd taken a little of the back as to say that, was part of the responsibility or the fault of the supervisors because they had no experience? It seemed to say that now they're going to make sure that they educate as new supervisors come on board. It's, it's, also, she stated with regards to educating as new employees. Well, we know as new employees, you, part of your responsibility is to be part of, if, and if there's an emergency, you're going to be part, you're going to be called and you're going to come out and help. So not educating employees, and now they're going to be doing it, well, they should have been doing it all along. I know I, there, the communication, there was a lot of broken-down communication, and one of the things was, that I was very critical of was the fact that they did not have Spanish-speaking people helping out there. Myself and other citizens volunteered to come and help translate, and they said, no, we don't need you. And that was on a Monday, and then on a Friday, you know, I, I, I'm at the Vets Memorial and a building, and I hear the PIO say, well, we don't have translators. It's like, there was four of us that volunteered on Monday to translate, and on Friday, the PIO is, is claiming that the reason things have fallen to the wayside is because they don't have translators. So lesson learned, and I hope that you move forward. This is not the first time that San Benito County has gone through this. And the fact that there was a book, there was a manual that was submitted the day before the floods came, well, why wasn't that used? You know, and, and we're criticizing in something that has already happened, but you can't, you cannot continue to have an excuse, and it's not my fault, it's somebody else's. At the end of the day, the person who's responsible should take action and say, I am responsible, this is what happened, and we're going to do some change. Instead, it costs San Benito County money to get this assessment taken care of.
I have no further public comment.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board. Any comments, questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Cosmickey?
Oh, sure. Thanks. Yeah, question-wise, I just want to make sure that the, the report and the work that we get out of it is relevant to other disasters as well, or is it possible to use some of this information to, to really sort of solidify our plans in the event of, for instance, a big earthquake?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to make sure that that's part of the, the thought process going forward as we take the plan and implement some of the recommendations. And then what I saw, focus on training, clarity of roles. Oh, by the way, the, the report is included with the agenda.
Correct.
So if anyone wants to read the report, it's not, you know, terribly long read. It's 50 pages, but it's actually like 30 something pages if you take out the appendices. And I thought your presentation was a good presentation. But it's clarity of roles, collaboration, information sharing, communication with non-English speakers. That's part of the report, and it's part of the emphasis of the report, and I appreciate that. And I like the idea of clear and concise roles and responsibilities manual, that would include the, the community-based organizations. The part that really jumps out to me right now, because I deal with it still regularly in my district, is the debris, stream debris cleanup. And I just want to make sure, trying to work with, for instance, local farmers and make sure that they get the access that we've told them that they can have. And they're getting some pushback. And since this element was included in the report, I'm going to take advantage of that and bring this up. What can we do as a county to really clarify, again, the, what our property owners are allowed to do during this emergency? Because we, apparently they are getting pushback from some agencies. And what comes to mind, and I know Steve Loop is here, and I've been communicating with Steve and, as well, when I get these correspondences, but, you know, for instance, we got the state saying one thing, and we have the Regional Water Quality Control Board in some instances saying something else. So I just want to try to figure out, how do we, I don't want to throw my arms up when I get, you know, questions from the farm community in particular. I want to make sure that we're allowing them to get in and clean up what they can clean up. So how do we clarify that?
We'll invite Steve up. It is a complicated situation. Yeah, let's Steve elaborate.
Well, Steve comes up, Madam Chair. I, I almost want to have this be an item that we bring back to the board, because I think I have a lot of questions, and I don't want to bombard Steve right now with my questions, but I think it's something that we really need to address, the cleanup, wholeheartedly and what's happening with the community.
I agree, definitely.
Yeah, so, thank you for that, Supervisor Cosmickey. You're correct. It's the State Water Resources Control Board that, I guess, became aware of some earthwork activities and reached out to, I think, two property owners that I'm aware of. So to answer your question, I'm trying to work with that State Water Resources Control Person, I have one contact, to determine how we can give those folks some guidance. It's my understanding that the state is concerned that some of the loose material could make its way back into either a creek or a storm drain system or a neighbor's property. And so that's at least their concern with one property. So as the CAO just mentioned, it's, it's a complex situation. Fish and Wildlife have been on board pretty much 100% to my knowledge for storm cleanup, as they stated over the past couple of months. So I just need to coordinate with the State Water Board and, and then provide some guidance to those two property owners that I'm aware of. And I think it's a great idea, Supervisor Kuro. I'll just make this kind of an ongoing board supervisor discussion item so that we can update folks. And hopefully during the next meeting on the 22nd, I'll provide some clarity. Just so you know, FEMA actually just provided us with a document that does provide more clarity. However, the State Water Board is not included in that document, so to speak. So we're getting closer, and so that's the best answer I can give at this point.
But ultimately, the, the goal is to sort of just really reemphasize with the water control board that, what the actual rules are. How can we just tell them, you know, hey, look, you're wrong? You know, we've been told, we've been told that, that we're allowed to go in. We're telling our property owners this. I've personally told property owners this, and they're ecstatic about it, and rightfully so. And then, and then they get these warnings from the water. I just think it should be a priority as far as just straightening out the water board and getting them on the same page. That's really my main thing. And I appreciate any communication staff can do, whether it's directly with the property owners or back to me as a supervisor, so that I can clearly and concisely communicate. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet.
Hey, Steve, would it at all be possible for us to bring in somebody from the Water Quality Control Board? Like, is there any possibility of us bringing them down here and maybe even like Fish and Wildlife and kind of having kind of a town hall meeting so that we can figure this out? Or is that not an option?
I think it's an option. I, I'm not sure.
Would it be helpful?
We want to have multiple permitting agencies in the same room, which sounds like government speak. But I think Fish and Wildlife have been pretty clear that.
I know Fish and Wildlife has, but I, I, you know, I completely hear Supervisor Cosmickey's concerns, because I'm hearing the same thing, in that it's like, okay, well, one agency is telling you one thing, but if you do that, then you're going to be in violation of this agency. And well, let's not forget, there's two or three more agencies to stack on top of that. And so people are afraid to do anything. And so the problem is, we're going to have rains, right? And it could be horrible. They're predicting an El Nino year. And so what does that do to our community? We could be in worse off shape. And so I feel like if there's any way for us to make it a priority and to get people in the room and all of us hearing the same thing, it might be beneficial. We might be able to make way. It might be a complete disaster, but I feel like we have a responsibility to at least try, because I feel like right now you've done everything you can, and, and, you know, we're making these calls, but it's just, it's not going anywhere. And what, we have not had a lot of these creeks and things cleaned out because of their, people are afraid to do anything. The fines are hefty.
So noted. So a couple of things. One, I'll, I'll reach out to the State Water Board and invite them, 100%. Regardless of they participate or not, I'll still provide an update. And I think this is, at least from my understanding, is somewhat new issue that just came up within the last couple of weeks with the State Water Board. So hopefully other folks have just proceeding with the cleanup that Fish and Wildlife said they could do in their creeks. It is complicated because there's at least three agencies, technically more, but I won't get into it, that oversee creeks. So, but I'll invite the State Water Board, and if they don't attend, I'll still provide some guidance. Hopefully, I'll provide an update on the, on the next board meeting.
Thank you. And I don't necessarily need the State Water Board to come to a board of supervisors meeting, but if there was like a stakeholder meeting, a town hall type of a thing, I think could be incredibly beneficial for the people that are needing to clean out their creeks and stuff. So might be beneficial. I'm sorry, Supervisor Kuro, I totally cut you off, so go ahead.
No, I like where both of you are going, and I totally support wherever this might end up. Not adding more work, but knowing that this is going to add more work, sorry. We know we don't have a great communication network with the owners of these properties. Can we start to build that network by utilizing GIS and kind of treating it, I'm going to go off of what has happened in prior board meetings with the roads, where you guys developed this road status map. Can we do the same sort of thing with the creeks, but also then start to gather that information between the assessor's data and recorded data and the tax collectors' info, so that we can start building this communication and education so that residents understand what their role is, what our role is, but then also bring the information to them from these agencies? Just a thought.
We've kind of done that, and we did that early on when we held meetings.
Okay.
There were a few parcel owners or property owners that did attend. There's many that don't, or didn't maybe get the message or invitation. We can definitely try again, but we did use the information from the assessor's office.
Yeah. I almost feel like having some sort of a network that we start to build on these flood zone areas to really communicate more directly. And, and I know the assessor's data doesn't have a lot of information. Sometimes they have a phone number, sometimes they don't. A lot of times it's a landline. Not to make more work, but Renee can do this. He can take voter data and compare it and extract any emails that are on the voter file. And I believe because this is for county purposes, that's all I would defer to legal, but that's all accessible data. Just to start to build this network before we get into this really bad rainy season, which we do know is coming. And notifying property owners of what their roles are. I mean, in some areas, we don't have the right to go in and clean, and I think we need to make a bigger training on that. So with that said, thank you, Steve. I won't harp anymore on that. But can I go on my comments for, for Chris?
Just, I, I do just one more thing. I just was hoping that we could have a follow-through at some point, whether it's three, six months down the road, following through on the recommendations in the report, just to see where we're at. Thank you.
Absolutely. I totally support that, too. Number one, thank you. I did go through the report. It, it, a lot more information in the report. It wasn't fast, but it was very accurate. You hit the highlights that came out of the report, which was great. Being a former county employee, I'm going to admit something that is, I, I've already told the CAO, I'm going to do this. You know, you're assigned, you get the letter from the CAO, you know, from Office of Emergency Services, that you've been assigned to this specific task in an emergency, and you need to take four sessions of training, I believe it was. I will be the first employee to say, I'm sorry, I didn't do any of those trainings because the election came first, but that's the problem. We are not showing that this is a priority, and I will be the first one to admit that I was one of those employees that was putting my responsibilities before emergency responsibilities, which we need to start changing the mindset of employees. And I seen with Henny and her team, when you're hired now, it's very different than it was, you know, 12 years ago, 13 years ago, where you were handed, you know, here you're an emergency service, you know, responder. Now you actually get a, a video and understand, oh, you really are, there's something that you have to do. So I, I am big time supporter of more training, and if that needs to come from the board, really emphasizing that this is part of your role and making sure that we have it on every one of our job specs and that they're signing off, that they understand that this is their role, I think that will help you and support you.
I think they understand the role until they're called on Martin Luther King Day, that was a holiday, and we were told by many, it's a holiday.
Yeah.
No kidding.
Yeah. Emergencies don't take holidays.
So it, it's just reeducation and what it involves, and emergencies don't discriminate, and it could be 24/7.
Yep. And that could be seven days a week. And we need to have that, that training where we aren't burning staff out. I know there was a lot of burnout. I get it. I've been there. But we have to have it deeper where we actually rotate staff so that we don't have that burnout, because it will, we, we need to make it where we feel like we're helping and we're not hurting our employees. So I'm a big supporter of the training. I'm happy to hear about the supervisor training. I'm not going to go anymore on that because Supervisor Cosmickey already commented. The translation side, doing as much translation as you can in advance. Keep going back to, the, the elections office has a full-time translation firm on staff. So they contract that out. If you need support on that, I know it's hard sometimes to get multiple contracts, but you can probably piggyback on that. And then I'm open to the idea of having maybe a, a public forum or something. I just think we need to do better communication with what our role is versus what the property owner's role is. And whatever we can do as a board to support you with that, I'm here. With the supervisor training though, I really think that we need, and this is my last comment, we need after going to these NACO conferences and CSAT conferences, FEMA and, and what these other counties do is the board members come to these updates. They don't have a say. You guys are in charge. The sheriff's office, OES, the heavy hitters are the ones in charge. But the board members attend and actually get the update direct so that they aren't misinforming the community. So I would really recommend, and it does not break the Brown Act, I will lead to counsel on this. If we are there and not in a voting capacity and it's an emergency, we can all be in the same room getting an update through OES and the sheriff's communications, if I'm understanding correctly. Yeah. So that, so that we're saying what is the accurate information and misinformation isn't happening out there. The other thing is, is when you first come on, I would love to do like a mock what happens in an emergency and where do you guys go and where do you activate the emergency? I know you have.
We do not have an active EOC in the county.
You do not have.
We do not.
Is that something on our list of?
We're working on that, but we don't, we were fortunate through COVID that we were virtual anyway. So we operated semi-virtually for the floods.
Okay.
But if we had a space that we utilize 24/7, which we will, that is on our plan, it would make it much easier to have meetings and breakouts.
Oh yeah. I completely support that. And after seeing what was in some of these other counties on their slides, I mean, they just showed the images of their, their centers. I was just like, wow, I don't think we have something like that. So, okay. Thank you, Chris. Great update.
Thank you.
All right. I don't need to repeat the other board members here. So just something I, that was striking with the report, the 80,000, the information they got to the state, the 80,000 unhoused residents, how did that get to the state? And how do we prevent that in the future? Because that was something I remember at the time caused a lot of confusion and just added a lot of work for everyone that was involved that was trying to do actual work.
Vetting everything through our PIO. And there was, I believe, just talk conversations throughout the community and the county, different neighborhoods, different people, just talking amongst themselves and coming up with things that somehow got to.
So it wasn't, it wasn't someone from, it was public?
It was not the PIO.
No, it was through the PIO. It was public, public information that they received.
Say it again?
It was through the public.
Yeah, it was a public case, exactly.
Okay.
Public social media, public comments.
That 80,000 people had been displaced and that.
And that got back to the state somehow, then public reached out to the state. Okay, yeah, well.
Obviously greater than our population.
Right, right.
It was the first thing that we had to.
Right, that's a difficult one. Yeah, it's difficult to prevent, I suppose, too, other than just more, more outreach to the public about the correct information. All right, well, that's all I was wondering. Thank you for the report and everything.
Thank you.
Chris, thank you so much for presenting this report. I'm committed to taking the training and continuing to make it a priority for staff. I know communication was incredibly frustrating. We were all kind of brand new to the job. And it was like, oh, my gosh, what is happening? I don't take it that we're being blamed. I think it's just, hey, how can we improve? And I think that would be a huge improvement. I remember going into Ray's office and with Supervisor Kuro and it was like, hey, well, what do we do? And we're handed this huge binder and it was like, no, no, we do have plans. But, but we were so new to the job that hadn't had the time to dive into all of that yet. So I think that will be a really great thing to help new supervisors with. I think anything that we can do to kind of be ready and be proactive, I think is a step in the right direction. So I love seeing kind of all of the focus on kind of the, the communication, making sure the translation services are there and understanding the roles and responsibilities, not only just with our staff, but I think so helpful when we're reaching out to the community-based organizations. I think people, you know, if there was one thing, we did see how much the community cared and how much they wanted to help. And so how do we put all of those positive things into motion so that we're ready to go when we do have an emergency? So thank you so much for, for this report and I look forward to taking the training. Supervisor Kuro?
PIO, status of replacing the PIO. This is an intricate person and position that we will need any, I mean, can I tack this onto this item without breaking any rules?
I will say that we're in the interview process and we unfortunately had a failed recruitment. So we're, we're continuing with that recruitment.
So the first step, and we've discussed this already, CAO Espinoza and I, in an emergency, our first request to the state would be for a PIO. And that would likely come from one of our region partners. So that would be our very first request. Our Cal OES rep knows that and would have somebody here as soon as they could.
And I think, if I may, if I may add a couple. So I, and I think this, I think the training aspect is extremely important. I want to thank Chris for all the work she's done as well as staff with regards to this. But I always say that for new board members coming on, administration spent a lot of time training. But there's so much to, to understand and learn, even from a Board of Supervisor perspective. And I think this is, looking back now at it, this is an important thing that needs to be done if we can prior to the start date for new board members. It's, it's just, as you know, we were not lolligagging around. We were constantly working. But there's so much to understand and learn as a supervisor, as staff, as employees. It's, it's just not as, as simple. But it, but it does highlight kind of what we need to focus on and make sure it's on the top of our, our list and the, and the training side of things. So anyways, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Okay, moving on now to item 2.5, Steve Loop. And this is introducing an ordinance amendment to code section 1.5 dot 1.0.095 to increase administrative fines for violations of illegal dumping.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. Today we are introducing ordinance amendment to chapter 15 as requested by the Board of Supervisors at the June 27th meeting. Joining me is Frankie Sanchez, our litter abatement, illegal dumping coordinator, who will be summarizing these changes. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors and Staff and Members of the Community. As Selena mentioned, my name's Frank Sanchez. I'm the Illegal Dumping and Litter Abatement Coordinator for Integrated Waste Management. At the June 27th Board of Supervisors meeting, the board directed staff to increase the administrative fines for illegal dumping violations in San Benito County. Since then, staff has drafted a proposed amendment to the county code of ordinances pertaining to the administrative fines for section 15. This amendment also gives authority to the county administrative officer to delegate enforcement of illegal dumping violations to a county department or staff person. We're here today to request that the board waive the first reading of the proposed amendment, the proposed amended ordinance. Currently, the fines are $100, $200 and $500 for the first, second and third offenses for illegal dumping in the county. And the proposed amendment would raise them to $2,500, $5,000 and $10,000. Staff will be present at the August 22nd board meeting to recommend adopting the proposed amendment. And today, staff respectfully recommends that the board waive the first reading to amend code section 15.01.095 to increase the administrative fines and authorize the county administrative officer to delegate enforcement of illegal dumping violations with the second reading to occur at the August 22nd Board of Supervisors meeting. And that is all.
Thank you Frankie. Do we have any public comment on this item?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. And on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Frankie, any comments, questions from the board? Supervisor Cosmickey?
Yeah, real brief. I just, I do believe this is a bold and necessary step and a message we're sending to the community. But I also don't want to put too far on the back burner some of the other recommendations that you and your staff, I thought they were good recommendations brought up in the prior meetings. So just looking forward to continuing to work on the signage, cameras, the enforcement authority and the tracking app, some of the things I noted. And, and then if there's an approval, I'm just hoping that we can put out, I know we don't have a PIO, but at least maybe a, a something, just to, you know, just outlining the, the basics that we're significantly increasing these fines, just to let the community know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Supervisor Kuro?
I'm going to just piggyback on the collection part. Is it clearly spelled out in procedures of how we're going to be collecting these fines? So that if we are unable to collect, that we go down other means? Whether that's a property that gets leaned or something? I mean, I just, I don't, I don't want to pass, I want to pass this. I'm a big supporter, but I want you to have the tools to enforce it. And I want to make sure that enforcement and collection is, is at the forefront. So I completely agree with Supervisor Cosmickey.
I'm going to defer that one to Selena.
Yes, right now we're still in discussion regarding enforcement at this time. It's really case by case who these complaints or the cases go to. If it's sheriff department, if it's code enforcement. And so we need further discussion with those departments. And that would be then a recommendation to the CAO on, on proper enforcement procedures.
And I, and I will just add to that, piggyback, staff and administration, along with Armee and Abraham and Steve Loop. We've been working on a direction that the board gave us during our board retreat on actually putting in requests, dumping, illegal dumping, fixing roads and other things. And GIS, Renee has been working on a solution using the GIS platform. So there's been a lot of work that's, that's gone into this. And it's, it's down to taking pictures, location on, on maps and, and multiple layers. So it's a really good system. So once we do that, then we can focus in on, on where that actually will go to, you know, to address those matters. So we're getting close. We're going to be actually presented at, at the next IT meeting, at the IT committee meeting, and then bringing it back to your entire board. So.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any way that we can, you know, I agree with, with some of the other comments regarding the enforcement. I think it's great that we set these fines that are more, but then if there's no tools that we have to be able to enforce them, what good is any of it? So I'm just wondering if based on Supervisor Cosmickey's comments regarding kind of signage and cameras and some of the other ongoing things, is it if we passed something like this today for the fine and fee kind of structure of this, would it be appropriate for us to bring this back maybe in, I don't know, three months, six months? Where we could address maybe kind of the continued conversation about signage and cameras and, and maybe the tools for enforcement, collection, that type of a thing? So that we could approve this today, but knowing that we'll get into maybe some more logistics in three, six? I don't know how long it would take to put all of this together. So you guys tell me what's an acceptable timeframe that you feel like, okay, at that time, you'd have kind of a solid plan to kind of bring back to address those.
Definitely. I think about three to four months would give us enough time to kind of get a good understanding of how these fines are going to be used. But you're right, we do need the proper preventative measures in place to make sure that these fines are going to be effective. And so currently we're drafting signage to send over to the sign technicians so we can have those printed and then placed at these hotspots. And we're also in contact with, we're doing research into bringing cameras to the county. And so we're in contact with a couple of different businesses in terms of illegal dumping surveillance. One is going to be here, I think, next week on Friday to give us a little demonstration on how their, their system works and what they have to offer. And so we'd probably have to talk to Selena, but I think three or four months after these fines are, are out there, we can come back to the board and give a, give an update.
Okay. I mean, I'm comfortable moving forward and I think within three to six months if you come back, that, that works for me. So would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to waive the first reading of the amended ordinance and delegate and authorize the CAO to delegate enforcement with the second reading to record at the August 22nd meeting.
Second.
So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? 4-0. Thank you very much. Okay, now item 2.6, we'll go back to Steve Loop, Public Works Administrator, accepting a presentation regarding the library expansion project status.
All right. Good morning again, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. What follows will be a lot of dates and, and milestones and status for the library expansion project. And just for context, the county was awarded approximately $10 million from the state library system to construct an expansion to our Samiyo County Free Public Library over on Fifth Street. And the county, as part of that process, is matching approximately $5 million. So there's a total budget of $15 million to expand our library. So I'll go through the current status, provide some images. For a conceptual expansion, we'll talk about that and then provide more dates on a milestone timeline. And so where we're at today is on March 16th, the county and the state signed the grant that delineated kind of the parameters of how we're going to proceed. We actually were awarded the grant a few months before that, but everybody signed it actually in March of this year. And so we are now releasing an architectural services request for qualifications to have an architect create what we're calling the bridging documents. And they're going to be a 30% design level package. And that package is going to then be provided as the framework to a design, build, construction team. And so design, build, for those of you that aren't familiar, it, it's a good process that avoids hopefully change orders that would occur from a typical design bid, build process. And what I mean by that is most of our projects today, we actually, we have consultants, they make a bid package. We put that out to the public contractors to bid on. Somebody bids on that contract package and the project starts. If there are any changes during the course of construction, which always 100% happen, then those changes are typically addressed with change orders and additional funding that's required of the project. And a design bid, design build process is a little bit different. So what we're going to do is an architect will create just a 30% design package, hand that over to a design, build team. And that team will have designers and construction folks working together. And so they'll take the project from 30% to 100% construction documents, working with the county and working with the same architect and a construction management team. And so they're going to be part of that process to design and build the project. Therefore, if there are slight changes and modifications, really the design, build team, they're responsible for most of those. Now, if we peel open a wall and we find some goofy, who knows what artifacts in the wall that they're not aware of, that's different. But short of finding something extraordinary or unusual, the design, build team is really responsible for the whole project once they take it over. And so they have that ownership. They work with the county and the architect. And so theoretically, it reduces quite a bit the change orders that could occur for this type of project. So, so in September, we'll, the county will select an architect to start that 30% design. As part of that process, there's a group that's been very involved with just the library expansion and just the library itself. In a very good way, they're called Friends of the Library. And so they're actually going to be one of the members of the, of the evaluation team that selects the architect. Because the images that you're about to see were produced with the help of the Friends of the Library, with the vision of some of our county staff. So they've been involved in this kind of the preliminary phase. And that actually helped us kind of formulate how we were going to apply for the grant. So they'll be part of the team that helps select the architect. And they'll be a stakeholder that we'll talk about in a minute, that they'll be part of the stakeholder meeting as well. That they'll be part of the stakeholder meeting as well, in addition to some other folks. So around, in September twenty-sixth, the second board meeting in September will approve the contract with the architect. Now, I'm gonna pause there and just show some images of what we're talking about. Again, these are just concepts. The Friends of the Library folks worked with an architect and our county staff, and they came up with some visions of what could occur. And if you've seen the front of the library on fourth, this would be a nice aesthetic improvement. And then, if you're looking kind of a bird's eye view, sorta kinda, the four thousand foot, square foot addition is generally thought would be, you know, expanded towards downtown. And then, potentially, there could be a three eight thousand square foot addition, as shown. But I think right now, the budget is really for the four thousand square foot addition, in addition to the existing eleven thousand square foot. And this is just the concept that they came up with that we're gonna share with the architect that's selected as a concept of how the expansion could occur. And, so, in October of this year, we'll have already selected an architect. And then we're gonna just, we're also gonna put an R F Q for the construction management team that'll be onboard for the remainder of the project to oversee the project for the county. So of those two folks involved, we'll also have a stakeholder workshop, which will involve, you know, folks here, some of the, kinda the overseeing agencies, perhaps even P G and E, because they might have to be provided some extra power. We'll have some county staff, we'll have the Friends of the Library, and we'll have a stakeholder workshop to just talk about the vision for how we could utilize that fifteen million dollars for the expansion. And the construction management firm, they're just kinda overseeing the project, you know, at that point moving forward. It's really about the architect's vision, the stakeholders' vision, the county's vision, more than anything, obviously. And so, in November, we'll get the construction management team onboard. Architect will then complete the thirty percent design plans. And the construction management firm will help package that, we call it the bridging documents. Then, January twenty twenty-four, those, the C M team and the architects will have the design-build scoping, bridging documents completed. A month later, we'll release that out to ask for design-build teams to take over the project, bid on that package, and say, okay, we're gonna take thirty percent plans, finish the design, and actually construct the project. So it'll start in February. April, the board will approve a design-build team based on whatever proposals we receive. We'll also have to start the library relocation of staff. And theoretically, Office of Education is already being relocated at that point, because they're actually in the building as well, they, in the library that, today, so. But, we actually have to start relocating some of the library staff in, or the library staff, I should say, in April of twenty twenty-four. Then in August of twenty twenty-four, the design-build team would complete their design package, again, working with the architect and the county. And will complete the staff relocation of, in August of twenty twenty-four, about a year from now. September, we'll start construction. We have until January twenty, of twenty-sixth to complete the four thousand, approximately, foot, square foot expansion. And then in March of twenty twenty-six, we have to turn in our financial docs and reports, the final documents and reports to the state. And so, I shall pause there.
Thank you. Steve, do we have any public comment?
We do. If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. And on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have Tammy Abilas in chambers.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors. Steve, thank you very much for the timeline. I know that's kinda something we've been looking forward to getting. This is great to see it moving forward. I guess I just want to reiterate that the Friends of the Library made, I guess, had the architect, you know, make the preliminary renderings. And again, that's the vision that may or may not be what the, and, and, you know, library renovation ends up being. But I was a little surprised to hear that you only think that the money will go to do the four thousand? Because we really were hoping to go out east and west to do, you know, a grand total of at least seven thousand additional square feet for the library, really open it up. And in terms of the R F Qs, can, can, can you do the architect and the project manager R F Q at the same time to maybe try and, you know, consolidate the timeline, make it a little tighter? And then keep us moving forward with all of the moving of the child support services, the Office of Ed, the, you know, relocating the library, staff and materials? And then also offering, again, our support and whatever help that the Friends of the Library can do to continue this project moving forward. Thank you.
I also have in chambers, Elias Salinas.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Loop. This is really exciting to see something on paper, because this has been coming for so long. The Friends of the Library have been working really, really hard for years and years to, to do this. My question is stakeholders. So the, the citizens of the city of Hollister are also stakeholders. So, is it through intergovernmental committee that you reach out to the city of Hollister for their contribution towards the, this project? I mean, and it's, I realize it's, it's the county library, but they are stakeholders. They are the, they are the majority that use them. And it would be great to get some help financially from the city of Hollister? Or also the possibility of the Economic Development Committees, committing to also have some kind of an input, to go out there and help get some funding to actually expand it, like Tammy is saying? Is it just because there's only a certain amount of money? Or can we actually go out there and actually get more money? You're in the beginning stages, and designs can be fluid. So based on money that you can go out and you can get, I think that this is definitely a start from, you know, it's been going in years. But I, I would really like to see the city of Hollister contribute something to this. And again, like I said, it could be through intergovernmental, or it could be through the C A O speaking, speaking to the, the city manager, and then bringing it onboard as an agenda item for the city to, to do something. As well as, again, I'm gonna mention the Economic Development Committee. How can they contribute to this? Thank you.
I have no further public comment.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the board? Supervisor Cosmicke?
Thanks. Um, yeah, I wanna thank the Friends of the Library, they're instrumental in this. I wanna thank the Office of Education for cooperating, because the expansion concept just simply wouldn't work without the Office of Ed doing so. And then, I also just wanna, with the deadlines, make sure that we're cognizant, and I know you are, but just to underscore it, that we're giving ourselves enough, enough breathing room. Because with projects of this magnitude, things happen. And if we only have a few months of breathing room, I'm a little concerned about that. So maybe if we could shoot for just nudging it back somehow, a little bit, if, if at all possible. And then I agree with the sentiment that we really wanna push hard for the full seven thousand square foot expansion. Whether that means going to get more money, or whether that means looking at the design of the library and maybe making it a little less fancy and more, I don't know, more practical, if that's part of the equation. I would rather see more space. If you were, if I'm deciding between artistic integrity versus just space and more space for our community, I'm gonna go with the space personally. So maybe keep that in mind. And then I also agree with Elias Salinas's point about, now, now we really need to start holding those discussions with the city of Hollister and see if there's some buy-in from the city as far as contributing or what role they might play in the library, just because the vast majority of the residents that use the library are city residents. I know that we also represent the city residents, but I, I do think that it would be, it would be appropriate. And I would be certainly glad to bring it up for intergovernment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Steve. Thanks for the update. It's great. You know, and of course, like Supervisor Cosmicke said, appreciate everyone that's been involved in this. I just have a little thing, I'm actually going to respectfully disagree with Supervisor Cosmicke on the space issue. I think it is important to have things to, you know, we can have a lot of space, but if it's, no one wants to go in it because it's not appealing or anything, I, I don't think that serves a purpose. So I think it is important to not just maximize space at the cost of any kind of aesthetics or, or anything like that. So that's just my two cents on it, but that's all.
Steve, thanks so much for the update. It's great to see a timeline and things moving forward. I do have a couple of concerns. Space was one of the things brought up, and I'm assuming that this is a cost issue, that if there's not enough funding, doing the three thousand is maybe a future enhancement. But I am supportive in maybe intergovernmental, starting this conversation of how we might be able to collaborate with the city. So I'm totally supporting with Supervisor Cosmicke, but we may have to do some, you know, negotiating there. How are we dealing with, I know, construction right now has a huge amount of delays because of P G and E. Don't know if that's gonna be a problem here, because they already have existing P G and E. But some projects are delayed five, six months, and they're improvement projects by P G and E. So that's one thing, I, I wanna make sure that we're keeping that in the timeline. Supply chain materials are not as accessible as sometimes they used to be. This seems like a pretty straightforward enhancement of the building, but you still have to keep in mind those supply issues. And then, was this, you're saying the R F Q, and I agree, doing the R F Q, R F P for the architect and the, and the construction manager, doing that simultaneously and bringing that team on at the same time, I think, would save some time. But are you looking at a, in this design build, are you looking at a not-to-exceed? Are you looking at a lump sum? Are you looking at a cost-plus type of contract for these consultants? What are you, what are you going with there?
So, did you want me to answer, or wait, or?
You can present at another time. I just, those are my, those are all mine.
Well, I understand, but I didn't know if, I was supposed to wait for the chairperson to make her comments and then respond? I, I can respond. Okay. Then also, take one step back to a couple of the public comments, and your comment as well. Yes, we would welcome the extra three thousand square foot. We had done some very preliminary takeoffs and somewhere around, let's just say for construction dollars, just to do a round number, it'll be fourteen or fourteen and change, because we need a little bit of the money for architects and designs and da-da-da. But let's just say, let's say, construction, we have fourteen million. If, you know, if we can get more than the four thousand square feet, yes. So that's one of the, the things we wanna get the architect involved with early on, because they'll be doing a cost estimate, a couple of cost estimates for us. And, you know, doing a ballpark before the stakeholder meeting, then we'll do another cost estimate after the stakeholder meeting. Sounds like the stakeholder workshop is already occurring up on the board chambers here today for different opinions on the design, which is great. And so, so we'll be going along the way. And we'll, that's one of the things the construction management team will help as well, which I'll talk about in a second, for your questions. They're gonna help do kind of a fact check and actually help the county reach out to what are some of these actual costs. But right now, we're right around that threshold, very preliminary, at the four thousand square feet and the, you know, fourteen, thirteen, fourteen million. Now, maybe that, we're being too conservative. And maybe, you know, we can absolutely do the three thousand square feet with the money that we have allocated. That's wonderful. So, we'll, we'll progress as we, you know, develop the design in that respect. We also accelerate the, the construction management firm. We thought that might be a little bit more lengthy process, because we might wanna do interviews for that firm. Whereas the architect, we could also interview the architects that propose, but we can also, it's, sometimes it's clean or easier, you can, they, they actually propose their vision when they send their proposals to us, so we don't have to do the interview. Or the construction management team, that might take an extra month or so. But, but, we'll accelerate that, and we'll try to release that, you know, A S A P, the construction management R F Q, per everybody's comments. As far as the architect, we'll just, we'll have a set value, not-to-exceed. Let's call it two hundred thousand dollars. I have no idea what the architect's gonna charge, or what they're gonna propose, because they're gonna need some structural engineers and some other folks. But they'll just, it, it won't be a lump sum, it'll be not-to-exceed. So they'll give us a price proposal, this is their billing rates, this is their hourly rates, this is what we do for most of our consultants. They just bill us as they go for the actual amount they spend, up to an amount that we agreed on beforehand. And as far as the construction dollars and how that contract's gonna be processed and produced, I, I think I should wait till we get the C M firm onboard. Because I'm probably, they might have a better idea of that type of big dollar, the best bang for the buck. So, I'll just pause to wait on that, that answer, so.
And I think it's really important that there's a value engineering to it. The costs are escalating so much, as Supervisor Curl just mentioned. It's, you, every month, you have to reevaluate. So it, gotta really look at the costs associated with this. So, I think that's important, a C M would be spearheading that and, and making sure that, that, that we're within our budget.
Thank you, Steve, for this presentation and the timeline. I think it's really exciting. I'm a, I, I love libraries, and I think they're kind of the heart of our community. So, really neat to see this happening. I fully support seeing if we can get the city of Hollister onboard to maybe help with some of the, you know, maybe added square footage or whatever it is. I also think that we could possibly, I don't know, but if there's opportunities for public-private partnerships as well, if that's something that we wanted to go down. I think there's definitely support here in this community for our libraries. And I'm really excited to see that we'll have Friends of the Library sitting on this selection committee for the architect. I, I really value all the time and effort that they've put in and, and their commitment to making sure that this project doesn't kinda fall through the cracks. And so, thank you so much for spearheading it and, and everything you all have done. So, I'm really excited to see it starting to kind of come into fruition and starting to select an architect next month, really is kind of exciting. So, thank you very much. I don't have anything else to add.
I will just, if I may, if I can add one more thing. I just wanted to mention to the board that I have reached out to past leadership at the city to infuse funding for this project, as well as even operations. And unfortunately, haven't been able to get a lot of traction with that. New leadership there, I have reached out, haven't got a response, but I'll be working on that, and we can bring it back to the intergovernmental, yeah.
Madam Chair, the only other thing is, being a, in a former county building, have we already done an assessment of any hazardous issues and abatement that may have to happen?
A long time ago, the answer is yes, but we're gonna have to refresh that. Just coming FYI, all of our projects, new or old buildings, we're having to do a hazard assessment of the materials in the building. It's just kinda this, the way the state's operating. So we're gonna have to do a brand-new one regardless for this building.
Okay, that's just another area of timeline that becomes a major issue if you run into an unforeseen issue.
Yes, I agree. Thanks.
And I know that we don't wanna use this as last resort, but there is the ability to request an extension as well, so that's a possibility. I do know that in many offices, we do do that, the assessor's office. And the state's usually pretty good with this, especially if they see the progress. And they also are very keen, they're very aware that even bringing contractors in, purchasing of equipment is very difficult right now. So I think they've been a lot more lenient when it comes to that.
Thank you, Steve. So we'll move on to item two point seven, also with Steve. We're gonna accept a presentation regarding the status of new parks. We're going to accept a presentation regarding the status of new parks.
Okay, thank you. Yes, let's have a parks project update. And these are going to, this update will pertain to our new, I'll call them larger parks, actual parks as opposed to just park modifications that we have also going on in the background. But let's talk about some new parks that are going to be built in our county. So I should have put a map, but Sunnyside Park is, if you're familiar with the Hospital Road Bridge, there's Sunnyside Estates, which is a neighborhood just to the north of the bridge. And then there's Riverview Estates just to the south of the bridge. We're going to be building a park in both, for both of those communities. Sunnyside Park will actually be constructed within a large dirt area that exists as part of that development. And the other part of Sunnyside Park will be built near our library kiosk, which is also getting close to being constructed near Riverview Estates. And that's just northeast of the Hospital Road Bridge. So maybe little updates on Sunnyside first. So, Sunnyside, we actually are in the final stages. I have the final design package in our office from the consultants for those two park locations. And it will be finalized, just on the bottleneck, but it'll be finalized hopefully in the next week or so, maybe this week. And then we can put it out to bid. And so we will issue that bid package in September. We'll say, okay, contractors, please bid on this project. It's not a design build. We've already completed all the design, all the specifications. Now we're just going to hand that to contractor and say, please build it. So it'll be different than the library. It's more of our standard protocol for our projects. So November, the board will hopefully award the contract to the lowest qualified bidder. And what that means is, as long as a contractor meets all the basic qualifications in the bid package, they are a qualified bidder. So we, the county and all public agencies just award the contract based on the lowest qualified bidder, but they have to meet the qualifications, lowest price of the bid, I should say. So depending on weather, we can start construction in December. And it'll take four to five months to complete. However, you brought up a good point earlier in that, you know, we're starting to reach out to equipment providers, playground equipment providers, and get some of those timelines and possibly order some playground equipment. We can only do that in very specific narrow parameters where we can sole source that. They have to be on just one or two websites. But we're looking at possibly having the county order some of the playground equipment. Otherwise, we'll have the contractor do it as part of the bid package. And so that's one of the things we're actually working through internally. Sunnyside Park. So it's difficult to envision, but the bridge and the Hospital Road is actually kind of right between the two parks. On the left is the Sunnyside Estates Park that is built in their neighborhood. And it'll include a little picnic area, some paving, a playground, a nice little path, as well as a sport court that can be used for multi-purposes. It'll be an asphalt-paved sports court. And so that's the Sunnyside Estates Park on the left. And the other part of Sunnyside Park, we're calling it, is near Truckee Way, Old Hospital Road. And the bottom-right corner of that image is actually where the library kiosk is going to be constructed, probably, hopefully next month. We're actually getting a shipment on the canopy for that library kiosk within a week or two. And then we just have to work with a couple of our consultants. And long story short, the library kiosk project is in the same location and it's very close to getting installed. So, but this part two of Sunnyside Park is near Hospital Road and Old Hospital Road. It'll actually have a swing set, a playground set, a little picnic area, and a turf as well, and then some wood fencing. And so, yeah, those are the status of those two projects. And then I'll jump over to Riverview unless you would like me to pause there with those. Just keep going. Okay. River Regional Park, project status. So just so for folks that aren't aware, the project is actually located south of the high school and south of River Parkway. A third of the project area is owned by the county. The other two-thirds are leased to the county for, I think it was a dollar for 99 years approximately. So the high school owned that property and they were very generous and leased that project to the county for this park. So we actually, I'll provide a little context, as painful as it is on the status, but six months ago, we were actually going to break ground on the parking lot out there for, I'll call it, phase one of the project. But when we walked the project with the biologist and looked at our environmental docs, we, they said we had to pause and do more of an environmental process. And so that phase one parking lot project got put on hold. And so we're getting through the process and hopefully in the spring, we'll have the environmental process and the design package for the overall park completed this spring. Then we can begin construction of the parking lot and the overall park in summer of 2024, so about a year from now. This construction right now, it's looking like approximately seven or eight months to construct. It's a pretty large project that I'll show you some images in a moment. But hopefully by spring of 2025, the construction will be completed. And as I mentioned, the phase one parking lot improvements were delayed due to additional required environmental process. So the project is located right along San Benito River, so it's in an area where there's a lot of special critters and things. So, all right, River Regional Park. So I have this general image and I'll walk you through it in a minute. And I'll try to go really quick. I still have a little bit of time, so I'll go through. I added some images that aren't in your packet for the benefit of those folks at the meeting. You'll see those in a moment. But at the upper-right corner, the dark gray area, that's the parking lot area. We'll have a storage facility there. We're going to have three or four bathrooms, two ball fields, an amphitheater, a park, parking playground, and we're going to have a remote control track. We're going to have a little bike pump track, they call it. We're going to have some pickleball courts, some basketball courts, and a botanical garden and a community garden as well. So I'll show you some images of that. And an astronomy area as well. So, oh, before I forget, there's also a Parks and Rec meeting tomorrow here. I believe it's now at 6 o'clock. What we'll be talking about, some of the other smaller projects. And I'll mention these two projects as well, but it'll be here tomorrow at 6 o'clock. All right, so here we go. I'll be fast. Cross-country trail. Around the perimeter of the park, we're going to have two trails. I always forget the actual course length. I want to say it's about two miles, the whole trail. And the fun part about that is, next to the parking lot up on the plateau, we're going to have sort of a picnic observation area where you can overview the park and overview cross-country and pickleball, I don't know, whatever you want to be observing. There'll be disc golfers perhaps, but it'll be a little observation area up above the cross-country trail. Then we'll just have kind of picnic areas throughout the park. By the way, these are images. These are conceptual drawings from our design team. This project has, you know, larger budgets than some of our other projects. And so we had a stakeholder meeting. A couple supervisors were there, which was great. And so they've seen some of these images. Then these are images. These aren't guaranteed to be built, just like the photo. They're just concepts, so. Fitness areas. Sprinkled throughout the trail, we're going to have, I think it's seven or eight, just small fitness areas. So if you're on the trail and you don't want to be a cross-country person or you want to do some other exercising, you'll have a few of these equipment available to you. Hard courts again are going to be pickleball and basketball at this point, although I'm trying to clarify with the high school whether or not the tennis courts from the high school are going to be available because we might have to add a tennis court here. I already talked to the design team about it, so we'll see. But that's TBD. There'll be a 12-hole disc golf course. And we'll actually be having a special meeting with a couple of folks. There's one gentleman who's on the Parks and Rec Committee who's a big disc golfer. So we'll get their input on kind of laying out the golf course. We're going to have a little remote-controlled track. Supposedly, that's an interest, hobby interest that's gaining popularity. I didn't know that until we started designing the park and somebody brought it up. And our Parks folks said, yeah, that's actually something we've been requested to design more of. So we'll actually have a little, a car parking area for folks that want to bring their remote-controlled cars. They'll have a little parking lot down there. It's kind of in the south part of the project. Pump track. Some of these images make me nervous, so I don't know if we're really going to install all these. But we are actually going to be reaching out to the community. And we're putting together a survey right now about the types of things that folks would want to see in a pump track. And so we'll take the survey. I've seen it's about 20 questions. And they're going to distribute that on a social site that I forget the name of. But they're going to get input from Hollister residents or Santa Clara County, San Benito County residents, and just get the input from our county. We're going to have a botanical garden, which is just, you know, a lot of nifty native plants. And we're also going to have a community garden. We're still trying to strategize on that, on how, whether or not, you know, you'll own a certain area or rent a certain area or lease a certain area or just tend to a certain area. And San Juan Oaks is actually also building a community garden park in their, it's a public park as well. So we're actually going to have a couple of community gardens between San Juan Oaks and our Riverview Regional Park. We're going to have an astronomy pad where you can bring your telescopes and things at night and perhaps, I don't know about the rocket launching part, might make our fire department nervous, so we probably won't allow the rockets to be launched. Sorry, false advertising. Nature play. Then we're going to have a couple of areas for smaller folks to just goof around and have some fun with nature. So the playground, probably seen images. Our concept right now is outer space meets the farm. And so we're actually quite far along on that equipment. We're modifying it a little bit to actually accommodate kind of bigger kids. But the images you see, especially the one in the middle, that will very likely be installed in addition to some other equipment. So we're pretty excited about that. And I'll stop there.
Thank you, Steve, very much. Do we have any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. And on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I do have Ms. Valerie Eglin on Zoom. You've been unmuted and you have three minutes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Steve, for that illuminating point. To see that things are moving forward in good progression. Yeah, the RC guys are very interested in that area for the remote control. All of these specific groups, I'm so glad that you're in contact with people who can give you input on these different specific activities. And so congratulations. This is very, very exciting. Earlier, I mentioned the cross-country distance on Anza Trail and that the high school teams were encouraged to use that until it became kind of an issue with a conflicting interest. But this has been resolved and that behind the high school, there will be this great opportunity for them as well. It's very exciting. So thank you again.
We also have Ms. Elia Salinas in chambers.
Thank you again. It's really exciting when you see the pictures, even though that's not, it's a possibility. So Gavlin College has a picnic area and has a table and it's got the sun shades. And on top of the sun shades, it has solar panels. And those solar panels charge the, a charging station. So you have USB so they can, people can charge their computers or phones or whatever. And I realize that it's Gavlin College, but maybe something to consider in the program. And then 30-plus years in the legal field, when I saw that pump station, you know, first thing is disclaimer for liability, releasing liability from the county if somebody gets hurt. So I just, just a thought. So do we really want to do that? Or is there a way to, how can you get a disclaimer, you know? Or they can just go to Hollister Hills or something. But anyway, that's just scared me there. Thank you.
I have no further public comment.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board. Any comments, questions? Supervisor Zenger?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Steve. A couple of questions. One, just a little thing on the sort of sky, you know, map rendition that we got. There's lots of trees everywhere. Those are going to be planted. Those aren't existing trees, right?
That's correct.
Is there any, is there thought about what trees will be planted? Just, I just worry about like things like palm trees that don't really fit in anywhere. I've seen that happen.
Great question. So our consultants are, I want to say tree lovers. They're very specific about making sure that the trees are appropriate for the environment, so.
Perfect. There we go. The other question I had was, has there been any discussion with the Arts Council as far as anything with like local artists putting, whether it's sculptures or different pieces of art throughout the park? I just don't know if that's been a conversation that's been had yet or not.
I have not, but I will reach out to them. And yeah, there's a lot of open space, a lot of opportunities. And we're even going to have some, I didn't show them, but their little outdoor classrooms that there's been some artsy concepts that our team has put together. So that's a great idea. I'll reach out to the Arts Council and see how they want to be involved.
You're doing. Thank you.
Supervisor Carl?
Totally agree with the tree comment. Keep them water tolerant and make sure that we're conserving water, but also make sure that they are from our community. It just makes it blend so much nicer. Water usage is such a concern right now, even though we're going into the rainy seasons. My questions, I had the same thing as one of the public comments about, you know, that pump fun thing that gives you heartburn as a mom. Yeah, major disclaimer signs. I know kids love it. It attracts kids to the park, so I am a supporter of it. But we need to make sure legally we have the disclaimer so that they are doing it at their own risk. When it comes to the playground equipment and ordering in advance, I am a huge supporter of that, especially because of doing it direct. It reduces the contract cost because they don't, the contractors don't do markup on that. So whatever you need to help that along, I'm a supporter of ordering, especially if it's something that will reduce costs. Thank you. And wonderful update. Super happy to see it moving forward, especially both the park over Sunnyside, Sunnyside Estates. Yeah, that one, security is always a topic and maintenance. I know that's on your, but the calls I get are always about security and maintenance and how we're going to maintain these. So just points of clarity for future conversations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as far as the Arts Council, this goes back a while, but I'm pretty sure I remember that we did discuss having the Arts Council included when we talked about the funding. So I would like us to go back and maybe look back at, because I advocated, I'm pretty sure I advocated, unless it was some other, this is a couple of years ago now already, unless it was some other Arts Council endeavor, I'm pretty sure we had the discussion about the Arts Council being, and the arts being incorporated into the regional parks. So I would like us to look back at that. The consultants definitely sound like they're tree lovers to me. And when we talked, you talked about the parking lot and it's obviously disappointing because we're going to build that parking lot, whether the salamanders and frogs like it. And so I would like to, I'm very excited about the remote-control car parking lot opening. I think that we could have some fun with that, with the remote-control car.
with the remote control cars and maybe we can have a little race with frogs and, I'm just kidding. I'm sorry. So, yeah, so anyhow, I'm just very excited about this and it's a big endeavor, but you know, in the end, this is, this is one of those projects that's really, to me, gonna define our community going forward, and so I'm just very happy to see the progress. Thank you.
Steve, since we are, you know, we kind of halted the progress on that phase one, will we be implementing all phases at the same time then? Now, when we start construction, or will it still be a phased approach?
Excellent question. So we were on the half yard line to awarding a contract to the contractor, who's a local contractor, to build the parking lot. So that would be my preference. The rub is, the dilemma is that it's obviously more efficient to build the whole parking lot at once, because just for everyone's information, it's really half to two-thirds of the parking lot because that parking lot was essentially gonna be installed first, just for the folks that are currently using the trail and the path today. And there are actually folks that, that use those paths on the weekends and evenings today. And so that's what that parking lot was originally going to accommodate and provide some ADA access points to the trail, to the existing paved trail. So to answer your question, the current thought is actually to have that original contractor proceed with construction, hopefully ASAP, because material-wise, they'll be able to mobilize and construct things a lot faster than the overall park regardless. So that's our current thought. So it would still be a phase one parking lot and then the remainder of the the project could be constructed. Obviously, if we did that, we would postpone the second half or third of the parking lot till a little bit later, till the first contractor was finished with his work. The nice part about the parking lot, there is no reason it could not be broken apart, just the way it's designed and the material, and so that's the current thought.
I just wanted to make sure, I'm looking at the timeline. We're saying spring 2025, construction completed. We're talking the entire park, not just the parking lot, right? That's what I just wanted to make sure. It's the entire thing. Okay, okay. And then since it is such a large area, and I apologize if, if it is part of the concept, then I just didn't see it. But is there an area for people to have kind of that rental, like that picnic space? You know, they're able to do that out at the Historical Park and Vets Park and several other parks in town. Will they have capabilities to do that at that park as well?
Specifically for rental or just for the space in general? So the space will be there and
What kind of that designated, you know, you're gonna have a birthday party. You have that designated kind of rental space locations where somebody could have a party. Because I feel like we are, there is a need for those in our community. It feels like that, you know, it seems like they're always in really high demand, all of those locations for rentals.
A hundred percent, and the answer is yes. For the larger picnic areas that have a roof or a canopy and you know, I'll say a party of eight or 10 or more, we already are planning how to have those be rented to parties, kind of like the Historical Park or Vets Park in a similar fashion. So yeah, almost like if you've been to Vets Park, they have those area one, two, three, four, five. We'll do something very similar for this park. Now, it'll just, I haven't looked at the areas specifically. I think there's three or four of those large areas. One of them's near the playground. But the rest of the picnic areas are just first come, first served. But there will be four or five larger areas you can rent out for activities and parties and things.
Awesome. I love to hear that there's, you know, ones that you can just impromptu, take your family and go for a picnic. But really nice to be able to have several designated areas where a larger party can have parties, so. I think those were my only comments. Thank you. Again, really exciting to see. I actually love walking. I walk that trail all the time and it's, it's a beautiful trail. It's beautiful out there, so thank you very much. Okay, so at this time, do you want to go to?
If we may, can we do one, we do consent, 1.17?
Yep, that's what I was going to, yep.
Sorry to interrupt you there.
That's all right. That's okay. So we'll go ahead and we'll do the consent agenda item. I believe it was item 1.17. And then after that, we can break for lunch. So Supervisor Kozbicki, do you wanna, item 117?
Yeah, so I have no issue with the EIR contract. I just wanna just point out for transparency that the, that this, you know, the developer has submitted their, you know, plans and it's the verbiage is incorporated into the staff report, but just for, again, for clarity, I just want to make sure that, you know, it says egg center and a number of amenities, but this is the area where it's essentially a, I don't, I'm not meaning to be negative here, but it's essentially a truck stop. And I didn't see that in the staff report as far as the, you know, the way it was described. And again, I'm not blaming the developers. They have the right to name it whatever they want, but they're calling it an egg center that includes a, well, a truck stop along with a commercial building that's being called a convenience store. And that's another one where maybe it's just the former newspaper editor in me, but it's a 16,450 square foot convenience store. And I don't think I've ever seen a convenience store that's 16,000 square foot, although it does include what's called a food hall.
Correct.
And I don't know what a food hall is either, so I'm looking forward to just having those, you know, the clarity for the public's sake, just, you know, so we can be open with the public about what we're dealing with. I don't have an opinion on the project itself. I just, you know, I'm just a big believer in, again, transparency and making sure that we're communicating clearly. And again, staff is just basically providing what's being provided to you, but I do think going forward, maybe if we can try to work with developers on just how things are laid out in the verbiage, and we have time to do that because this is gonna be a relatively long process, I assume, to get to the finish line here with this. And then the other part that jumped out was the, the second line in the description, just very vaguely mentions that the project would include a farm stand. And if we can recall going back to January, I had to go back and look. But January of '22, that's a year and eight months ago. You know, when we were looking at the Beddable project, I had brought up some concerns of mine with the definition of farm stand and the county code allowing, essentially allowing a broad blanket exemption of planning processes and environmental processes when it comes to farm stands or fruit stands. And we don't really have any definition attached to what those are. And so if you notice along 101 now, we have that, at the Beddable, they were allowed to go forward with that building, very large building, almost 7,000 square feet, quote, farm stand. And, and then after the fact, and I, just pointing this out, I correctly predicted that they would come back after the fact and ask for a conditional use permit to essentially do miscellaneous commercial there, so it's not gonna be a farm stand. So I just want to make sure that we, as a county, come back and look at, again, January of '22, that's a year and eight months ago. It's another reason why I'm hopeful that we can have the future items discussion soon as well, because I had to remind myself, I actually asked for a future item in January of '22, a year and eight months ago, and I had it seconded by former supervisor Tiffany to come back and and to revisit this farm stand definition, just to make sure that we're preventing down the road, you know, potentially exploiting that in the code. So I'm hopeful if I can, for a second time, if I can get a second person on the board to support bringing that back to look at the definition of farm stand and to either take out the exemptions or to put limitations as far as the size of the building that would be allowed, that would have those exemptions going forward. So I don't know if there's any support on the board.
I would second that.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just questioned Abraham. So if I understand Supervisor Kozbicki correctly, farm stand isn't, is that a, like, that's not a defined term? That's just a, is that correct?
At this point, they're, they're just indicating that they're gonna be providing a farm stand to be able to sell fruits, local fruit, and cut flowers, they've indicated. But we don't have all the details right now. We're, we're in the process of getting that, working with the applicant and doing the EIR for that.
Right, but in our, in like the county's language and county's code and ordinances, farm stand doesn't, there's not like a, a farm stand doesn't mean it's, oh, this is a stand that sells local fruit. It's just like a kind of general term?
It's just general. I believe we'll have to look into that and we can bring that back to you more concisely, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, yeah. Yeah, that's all.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve as recommended.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Four zero. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and go to recess now until 1:30 for our public hearing. We have two items. Thank you.
...
It is 1:30. We're going to open the meeting up for a public hearing. The first item is we're going to hold a public hearing for mosquito and disease control assessment and adopt a resolution to levy the rate for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 mosquito and disease control assessment. Turn it over to our acting agricultural commissioner, Ken Griffin.
Hello, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, CAO, members of the public. And on this is a standard practice for us.
Can you hit that mic? Yeah.
So resume or start over? Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. CAO, and members of the public. This is a reoccurring item annually for the mosquito abatement program. There's a property assessment value for each APN in the district that's collected by the county in order to administer the program. Just a couple of quick highlights for the program. The program is monitoring treatments, biological controls, mosquito surveillance, and abundance data helps for treatments as needed. We do public outreach, national night out, farmers markets. We do farm day. We're at different school functions to pump the message, which for us is basically dump, drain, and defend because of course of abundance of water will allow the mosquito population to breed, which could be problematic. Yeah, the program has a balanced budget. If you have any questions from anybody, I'd be glad to entertain them.
Do we have any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card, and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. I have no public comment.
Okay, any comments, questions from the board? Thank you. It looked like, it was interesting to look at some of the reports and the findings that it looked like, I mean, you guys have been doing an amazing job because everything has kind of been going down for the most part. Your numbers were down. They weren't, you know, which I consider fantastic in a situation like this.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, our crew does a great job. We're on top of things and the public helps us especially in wet years and finding areas where these breeding sources could occur. So it's been, it's been good and thanks for the compliment.
Great. So would someone like to make a motion?
Before I make a motion, I'd just like to ask, because I'm trying to educate myself. I know this on all the parcels countywide, right? And, and how was that determined? Was that a state thing, a county thing, an ordinance? How did it get to where you're funding? Because I like, I like the idea of it.
Yeah, so Supervisor Curro, it's, it's a big, long structure that I'm not super familiar with, but it's all included in the engineer's report. It's statewide. They do findings and studies and they, it can be adjusted at all, at all times. So, and it's pretty old, but I can refresh myself a little bit and get you a quick snap on that.
I would love just to educate myself a little bit more about it because I think it's very interesting how this all came about and I don't know the history. So that would be great. Thank you. And with that, I'll make a motion to, but do I, right? I'm doing the, do I have to do the whole reading? Or do I just say per staff recommendations?
It's just the resolution.
Yeah, so adopt the resolution per staff recommendations.
Second.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Four zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so I'm going to close that public hearing and I'm going to open the next public hearing, which is hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution imposing a fee tax assessment in fiscal year 2023, 2024 for utilities and services provided to county service areas. Adopt resolutions authorizing the county auditor to levy special taxes and establish the 2023, 2024 special taxes within community facilities districts 2015-01 Santana Ranch and 2018-01 residential services. And I'll turn it over to Steve Loop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Supervisors. Similar to the previous item, this is an annual assessment of taxes for the CSAs and our two CFDs. The first CFD is, was based on a 2015-01 fiscal analysis and it pertains specifically to Santana Ranch's CFD. And the remaining CFDs were based on the 2018 fiscal analysis and those are for the more recently formed CFDs. So in summary, there's just one CSA that's slightly being increased and that is Union Heights. And the slight increase will allow them to, instead of being slightly in the red, it'll put them slightly in the black so they can actually start to generate a small reserve fund in case they have a project that needs to be implemented that's unexpected. Santana Ranch, they're just jumping up 5.6% based on their, the annual CPI, Consumer Price Index from 2022. And then the 2018 folks, there's 12 of them, they're just basically getting increased 4%, but they're based on an April to an April index increase. So that's why it's slightly different than the Santana Ranch, which is a calendar year Consumer Price Index calculation. So that's pretty much it and I'll pause there.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card, and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board?
Madam Chair, just wondering if, have we heard any, the Union Heights, my district obviously, so I'm just, have we heard anything from them? Are they on board?
I, so I know Linda Young, our CSA coordinator, she's on the line. I don't know if we reached out to them before it was approved, but we would be reaching out to them after it was approved. So I don't know, maybe Linda, you can correct me, please, if, about outreach to Union Heights.
Hello?
We can hear you, Linda.
We can hear you, Linda. Okay, very. Hi, Madam Chair, CAO, board members, and members of the public. Yes, that's correct. We have not reached out to them. We plan on reaching out to all CSAs and CFDs once it is approved and create a plan from there.
Thanks.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Curro?
Supervisor.
Okay, you know, I got a lot of comments from my CSAs and this is only an increase that's a annual increase. This does not solve any of the services versus revenue for some of our CSAs that don't have enough because those will take prop 218 elections. Is that correct for raising the rates to be able to perform all the services that they, do you want to give me just a little talking point there for my constituents?
That's correct. So specifically for CSAs, they're actually, they've all reached their, their maximum of $512 per unit per fiscal year. So the only one that was, will be raised is Union Heights. And so you're correct to raise them. In regards to your question, it actually, you know, takes a special meeting with those folks to approve increases in comparison to services that are provided or not provided. And so we are 90% done with a, an analysis of all the CSAs to kind of see where they're at. And once that report's ready, then we'll start those discussions and that outreach.
I would like to be a part of that if you can just keep me in the loop. I want to kind of be your advocate, but also your go-between in talking to people and making sure they understand because there's a lot of misinformation about buying these properties and people think that the county is responsible for this when in actuality, the county does the work based on the revenue generated by the CSA. So I just want to make sure that we're getting that talking point out there. So thank you for everything you do. And Linda, I know you're on Zoom. Thank you so much for what you do. I look forward to working with you and all the CSAs.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? No? Okay, so do we need to adopt all of these county councils separately or can we do them all together?
I'm sorry, oh, the items underneath?
We need to do them separately or we can do them all together?
Well, the resolution has to be separate. You can do the rest.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to adopt the resolution confirming the applicable 2023, 2024 fees, taxes for extended services and CSAs as found in the fee tax report?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Four zero. And so then the next one would be adopt a resolution authorizing county auditor to levy a special tax and establish the 23, 24 tax rate for CFD 2015-01 Santana Ranch.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Four zero. And then lastly, a motion to adopt resolution authorizing the county auditor to levy a special tax and establish the 23, 24 tax rates for CFD 2018-01 residential services.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Four zero. Thank you much. So I'm going to close this public hearing. And now we just need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Four zero. Thank you very much.